Today, everybody, we have a, for those of you watching at home, we have a packed chamber here tonight, so we welcome everybody who's in the chamber. This is your City Hall after all. Councillors, we will not have with us tonight councillor Compaugh and councillor O'Malley, they send their regrets. And with that, I will thank our broadcasting partners Shaw and Local Two and pass it on to the clerk to get us going.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item one, adoption of minutes, a motion by councillors Turco and Hoopanen, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2015-0413 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under item number three, declarations of pecuniary interest, Mayor Provenzano has declared a pecuniary interest on item 6.11. Score your stuff.
Councillor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a pecuniary interest in item 6.21, accessible taxis and the relevant bylaw 2015-72, and also bylaw 2015-69, agreement with fire services procedural spouse employed by police services.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have conflict on matter 6.18, that the person that was awarded the contract as a client to the firm and related to that, the bylaw implementing that contract, 11.18, and also the accessible taxi issue. Seeking guidance from the clerk here, actually. A client is, might be affected by this change, so I'm not sure necessarily if the implementation of the bylaws.
Yeah, I don't, I think you, you probably should have addressed that to the city solicitor. But councillor Shoemaker, maybe perhaps if you're unclear on whether you have a conflict, you should just declare it as a conflict and...
Probably best. So, I'm not sure what number that is, but... Yes, perfect. I'll declare that conflict then.
Councillor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had I been here for the meeting of April the 13th, I would have declared on agenda item 6.13, the John Rhodes Community Centre request for proposals to operate the restaurant space. My employer has a service agreement with that proponent. I'm sorry, with Chili Willies.
Are you declaring any conflicts for this meeting?
Not in this one. I'm declaring for the one that I was not present at.
Councillor Sheehan, do you have any conflicts you'd like to declare?
No, sir.
Okay. I think that, that seems to be the extent of them then. Mr. Clerk, move on.
Okay. Under agenda item four, approve agendas presented. Just one note, council, the addendums are still printing and they will be to your desks shortly. They are available on your eScribe software. Motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that the agenda for the 2015-0427 council meeting and addendums as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a number of proclamations and delegations here tonight. Our first one is a presentation to Mayor Provenzano on behalf of the city, and this comes from the Order of the Sons of Italy, G. Verdi Lodge, Josie Campbell, President, Fernando Forcucci, immediate past president, Carmine Felice, second vice president, and Tina Destro, secretary. Order of the Sons of Italy are in attendance, read the 100th anniversary of the G. Verdi Lodge plaque, and we did have noted that there's one additional person here, John Chiappetta, who is grandson of one of the founding signers of the lodge.
So, we have a presentation, is that happening in front of, in front of us here? Mr. Clerk?
I believe so, I'm just looking for...
Yeah, so whomever's presenting.
Yes.
Are you speaking for her?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, councillors, greetings. It is my pleasure, along with the vice president, second vice president Carmine Felice, as we said, past president Fernando Forcucci. Sister Tina unfortunately couldn't make it, but to be here with you today and allowing us to present this plaque to the G. Verdi Lodge. The story of the G. Verdi Lodge began by dedicated priest Father Martinez, who established a social club in 1914 for the Italian immigrants. In 1915, a letter was sent out to the Order of the Sons of Italy of America, asking permission to affiliate with them on May 1st, 1915. Permission was granted and the G. Verdi Lodge was chartered. In 1964, the members built their own facility and dedicated themselves to assisting the needy in their community. By 1989, the G. Verdi was supporting the 16 various charities in the Sioux community. The G. Verdi and the Princess Marie Jose Lodge have left their mark in this very community that they reside. It is befitting that we are gathered here today and were put where our history began 100 years ago, to present them with a plaque, which by the way, was handmade by our National Secretary, Tina Destro. On behalf of all of National Council, we extend congratulations to the members of the G. Verdi and the Princess Marie Jose Lodge. We'd like to present this...
Why don't you come around here? We'll present that.
Yes. So, it is our pleasure to present City Hall in commemorative of the founding founders of the G. Verdi Lodge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of Grand, Grand Lodge, we'd like to present you, Mr. Mayor, token of our appreciation for allowing us to come in and do this presentation. So, thank you, thank you very much.
It's quite an accomplishment to be at something for 100 years and to contribute to the community in the fashion that you did, and we appreciate this plaque. We'll find a nice place to hang it proudly. Mr. Clerk?
Our next proclamation, celebration of light. Amber Scorni-Yankee, representing the Northern Ontario Families of Children with Cancer, is in attendance.
Ms. Scorni-Yankee? Welcome, City Council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Amber Scorni-Yankee. Thank you so much for allowing me to come here today. It's truly an honor. May is Brain Tumor Awareness Month nationally, and today I'm asking you to proclaim the month of May in Sioux St. Marie to bring awareness and honor those that are fighting for their lives and those that have lost their battle. May is also very important to me because my daughter Kiara was born May 1st, 2008, and she had a cancerous tumor called DIPG. Kiara fought hard for 257 days and passed away August 13th, 2014. Kiara's name meant light, and this is why on May 1st, we'll be having a celebration of light. This event is to honor her legacy and to raise awareness for brain tumors and pediatric cancers in Sioux St. Marie. During this event, we'll be having a candlelit memorial walk followed by a lantern release at Roberta Bondur Pavilion. This is an open event to all the public that would like to light up the night sky, to honor anyone that have had to say goodbye too early. We'll be fundraising for three charities that helped our family during our fight, Candlelighters, Roger's House, and the hosting charity Northern Ontario Families of Childhood with Cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas brain tumors are the leading cause of death from solid tumors in children under the age of 20, and whereas there are few known risk factors for brain tumors and no strategies for early detection, and whereas the most aggressive childhood cancer is a brain tumor called diffuse intrinsic pontine glioma, and whereas it is impossible to remove a DIPG tumor, and whereas children with DIPG typically survive nine to 12 months from diagnosis, fewer than 10% survive two years, and evidently no children survive beyond three years, and whereas there have been no improvements or treatment to cure rates since 1969, and whereas 150 to 200 children across Canada and the US are diagnosed every year, and whereas researchers are working hard to understand the causes of DIPG, but funding is needed and awareness needs to be created, and whereas one in 285 children are diagnosed with cancer before their 20th birthday, and whereas the city of Sioux St. Marie recognizes the devastating effects of childhood cancer on the residents of this city, and whereas this month in Sioux St. Marie, we pay tribute to every young person lost to cancer. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2015, as Celebration of Light Day and the start of Brain Tumor Awareness Month in the City of Sioux St. Marie, and encourage residents to show their support of this cause by increasing awareness, speaking up about cancer, and wearing the color gray. For this proclamation, I want to mention that this is the first year of the Celebration of Light, and this year will be held in honor of Kiara Scorni-Yankee, who passed away after a brief struggle with DIPG. The celebration will take place this Friday at the Robert Bondur Pavilion, beginning at 6:00 PM. I will be in attendance, and I will be speaking at the celebration, and I welcome anybody in the community that would like to attend to attend with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Parental Mental Health Day. Michelle Roberts, coordinator of the You Are Not Alone Project for the postpartum mood disorders wellness and awareness is in attendance.
Welcome, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, and good evening. Next week is Mental Health Week for May, and across the nation, we are attempting to have Parental Mental Health Day declared for postpartum mood disorder awareness. Three years ago, my world was flipped upside down after the birth of my second child, and in June of 2012, I was diagnosed with postpartum anxiety and depression. I was so sick that I had to be hospitalized, and as I began feeling better, I began asking questions as to where I can go to get help and support and information, were there any groups, anything that would help me? The answer, unacceptably, was no. Determined to not take no for an answer and to take control of my recovery and my family's recovery, I began reaching out, speaking out, and taking every opportunity to speak about my illness, my experience, and the need for awareness and change. No family should have to navigate this serious mental illness alone. I became part of the Northern Ontario Postpartum Mood Disorder Project and was a member of Phase One Photo Voice, where the women that I came into contact also shared that they felt alone. So, it was out of that that the You Are Not Alone Project was born. I had a vision to bring together people who had lived through postpartum mood disorders that would join with me in creating a photo display, to help send a message of hope and wellness in attempts to break the stigma, shame, and barriers that PPMD sufferers often face. Over the past year, Yanna has grown to become the platform in which postpartum mood disorder awareness is accomplished in our community. And as part of wanting to promote that awareness, we are asking to declare May 7th, 2015, Parental Mental Health Day in order to help increase that awareness. And on May 7th, the You Are Not Alone team will be in Station Mall doing an awareness event, showing the photos of the brave women who came forward to be photographed and send their message of hope and wellness.
Thank you for your courage in sharing your story. Thank you to the You Are Not Alone team for this important work. Whereas postpartum mood disorders are a group of complex parental mental health issues that affect one in five birth mothers, one in 10 fathers, one in four adoptive parents, and one in two teen mums within the first year of becoming parents. And whereas parents of every culture, age, income level, and race can be impacted by a postpartum mood disorder, which includes depression, anxiety, obsessive compulsive disorder, and psychosis, which include but are not limited to such symptoms as sadness or tearfulness, excessive fear and worry, changes in appetite, physical symptoms, irritability, hopelessness, intrusive thoughts, thoughts of harming self or baby, loss of interest and ability to bond with baby. And whereas we know that timely and culturally sensitive assessment and treatment enables parents to journey to wellness, however, due to lack of awareness, stigma, shame, barriers, and lack of comprehensive services and mandatory screening, many cases go untreated and unreported. And whereas the You Are Not Alone team is raising awareness about postpartum mood disorders and their symptoms and wellness, helping make PPMD a priority, creating informed communities with services for early detection and timely treatment to reduce the impact of these illnesses on individuals, their families, and their communities. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2015, as Parental Mental Health Day, and urge our community to become a postpartum mood disorders informed community, supporting families and creating a safe, stigma-free community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month. Sherry Duke, Chair, Sioux Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Duke.
Thank you. Start off by saying, if I get a little shaky, I'm quite nervous about being here. I'm nervous about talking about, to anybody. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and those in attendance, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Sherry Duke, and I'm the chairperson of the Sioux Chapter of the MS Society and chairperson of the MS Mandarin Walk. This year marks the 18th that people of Sioux St. Marie have supported those afflicted by multiple sclerosis by joining our annual walk. Each year, the walk takes place the first Sunday of May, and this year that falls on May 3rd. The funds generated from the walk help support our clients in Sioux St. Marie and the Algoma District. The month of May also sees us selling carnations on Mother's Day weekend. We offer several sizes of fresh-cut carnation bouquets, mixed bouquets, and potted mini carnations. There will be volunteers set up at the center court of the Station Mall on May 8th and 9th from 9:30 to 5:00, so come on down and buy your moms or your better haves some beautiful flowers. Also, on May 16th, from 11 till 2, there's a charity barbecue at Sioux Mill on Great Northern Road, and all proceeds support the local MS Society chapter. The Sioux Chapter has no paid staff, and all fundraising initiatives are developed and implemented by volunteers. In Canada, May is MS Awareness Month. As such, I'm asking that council proclaim May as MS Awareness Month in Sioux St. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Mrs. Duke. You did, you did quite well. Nothing to be nervous about.
Thank you.
Whereas multiple sclerosis is a chronic, often disabling neurological disease affecting more than 100,000 Canadians. And whereas multiple sclerosis symptoms vary widely and may lead to problems such as extreme fatigue, lack of coordination, weakness, tingling, impaired sensation, vision problems, bladder problems, cognitive impairment, and mood changes. And whereas there is no known cure, prevention, nor known cause of multiple sclerosis. And whereas the Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada provides individual and family support, independent living assistance, advocacy, public and professional education, therapeutic and recreational programs, and special assistance and exceptional services. And whereas the dedication and commitment of the participants and volunteers can only make this possible. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2015 as Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Month, and invite the citizens of Sioux St. Marie to take part in Sioux St. Marie Mandarin MS Walk on Sunday, May 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Emergency Preparedness Week. Lauren Perry, emergency management coordinator is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, councillors, and guests, for giving me this opportunity to remind everyone about Emergency Preparedness or EP Week. This year, EP Week runs from May 3rd to 9th. EP Week is a Canada-wide initiative to increase awareness about individual and family preparedness. Our community's participation will help raise awareness of emergency preparedness and thereby build a more resilient Sioux St. Marie. Emergencies can strike at any time, and in an emergency, response agencies focus their efforts first where their need is greatest. That is why individual emergency preparedness is so important. And while most people recognize the importance of being prepared, surveys have shown that less of half of Canadians have taken the steps they needed to be prepared. The goal of EP Week is to bridge this gap between knowing and doing. EP Week provides an opportunity to engage with people, showing them how to prepare and explain how doing so can reduce the risks and consequences of an emergency. The theme this year is to expand preparedness beyond the individual, to reach out to neighbors, family, and friends, and especially our vulnerable populations. And we've partnered with a variety of agencies to help in spreading the message of preparedness. Starting May 4th, we will be launching an online contest through the Twitter handles, @SiuFire and @Siuvpr, as well as on the city's website at www.sousetmarie.ca/epweek. We also, we also encourage everyone to attend one of our two public events. On May 6th, we will be at the Mill Market with the Vulnerable Persons Registry, where you can come pick up information on preparedness for individuals, families, and pets. And on May 9th is our annual Emergency Preparedness Showcase, taking place at the Great Northern Road Walmart from 11 to 2:00 PM. The showcase is a fantastic opportunity for the community to come out and meet our emergency partners, including local emergency radio operators, the Electrical Safety Authority, Sioux Search and Rescue, police, fire, EMS, Vulnerable Persons Registry, RCMP, Canadian Forces, and MNR. There will be a barbecue by donation, hot drinks, mascots, free giveaways, demonstrations of emergency equipment, and draws for 72-hour kits. There will be plenty to see and do, so come out and meet your emergency response partners and learn more about what you can do to ensure your family's safety.
Thank you for that presentation. Whereas Sioux St. Marie is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city and recognizes the importance of emergency management in Ontario. And whereas the goal of Emergency Preparedness Week is to raise community awareness and the need to prepare for the possibility of an emergency. And whereas during Emergency Preparedness Week, residents will identify and learn about risk in their community and how they can protect themselves and their families by planning ahead and being prepared. Whereas all levels of government have an important role to play in emergency preparedness and response, but ultimately, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of each and every one of us, and we must prepare now to secure strong and healthy tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim the week of May 3rd to 9th, 2015, as Emergency Preparedness Week, and I encourage all citizens to participate in educational activities on emergency preparedness. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Cultural Diversity Week. Danny Compaugh, Local Immigration Program Coordinator, and Carol Rains, Executive Director, Sioux Community Career Center are in attendance.
Welcome, Mr. Compaugh. Welcome, Mrs. Rains.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. To kick off Cultural Diversity Week, through our awareness committee, we produced a 30-second commercial that kind of preludes the week of events coming up. Carol's also here to talk to you a little bit about Passport to Unity event. But just before we show the commercial, I'd just like to say, on behalf of the entire LIP membership, we'd like to wish our CAA all the best in his retirement. It's been many years that I personally have gone up and asked and seeked his advice and guidance on a good number of issues pertaining to the immigration, the cultural diversity end of it. He's always been there. So, anyway, thank you, Joel, for that, and I can still remember, though, we had a couple of good times, too. I won't, I won't go there, that, anyway. Carol, did you want to speak now, or you want to show the commercial?
Let's show the commercial.
Show the commercial?
Sure. That's okay.
This week is Cultural Diversity Week in Sioux St. Marie, a time to celebrate the many diverse cultures and the contributions made by each to our community. Watch for celebrations and events taking place around the city. It all wraps up with Passport to Unity, the Sioux's largest multicultural festival that incorporates ethnic food, dance, and entertainment. To find out more, visit discoverthesouz.ca. A message from your local immigration partnership creating a welcoming community for all.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. Our Passport to Unity event is in its eighth year, and it really has grown to where a lot of the different community members are participating and more people are knowing about it, which drives diversity and inclusion within the community. On May 1st, we have Diversity Downtown, and it's a quick lunch hour where people can come and listen to music, maybe pop into some of the different businesses downtown. There's a citizenship ceremony in partnership with Sioux College at 1:00. It's really exciting for new Canadians to become citizens, and welcome you to that. Opening night celebrations, we have Great Lakes Honda, who, we're in our second year of the Annual Community Driven Awards. So, again, there's that. Comedy Night, which is always good for fun, at the Sioux College again, is participating and helping us to bring different comedy acts to this, to Sioux St. Marie. And then again, always on Sunday, we have lots of food and dance and entertainment. Some of the commercial is, is from that event, and it's at the SR Centre, so we welcome everybody as part of Diversity Week and hope you all can come to the whole community. Thanks.
Thank you. So, whereas the City of Sioux St. Marie Council affirmed and supports the principles of the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights, the intent and meaning of the wording in the city's Cultural Diversity proclamation, the value of the diverse cultures and the peoples who make up our population, that racial discrimination or intolerance against any person in our community should not be condoned. Whereas the concept of diversity encompasses acceptance and respect and recognize that each individual is unique. This includes race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, age, physical ability, religious belief, political belief, or other ideologies. A community that values diversity moves beyond simple tolerance to embracing and celebrating the uniqueness of every individual. And whereas the Sioux St. Marie Local Immigration Partnership is made up of over 50 local agencies and organizations with a mandate to attract and retain immigrants to the community through the development and implementation of a community-based settlement strategy, as approved by City Council in June 2010. And whereas the Passport to Unity event is Sioux St. Marie's largest multicultural event, incorporating ethnic food, dance, and entertainment from all around the world, bringing over 5,000 local residents together each year to acknowledge and embrace our diverse cultural past, present, and future. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim April 26th to May 2nd, 2015, as Cultural Diversity Week, and invite all members of the community to take part in Cultural Diversity Week and the Passport to Unity event, to acknowledge, celebrate, and embrace our diverse and cultural past, present, and future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our final proclamation for this evening is Day of Mourning. Michelle McLough Kennedy, Sioux St. Marie Labour Councils, in attendance.
On behalf of Sioux St. Marie District Labour Council, I have a presentation. Every year, more than 1,000 Canadian workers are killed on the job, thousands more are permanently disabled, and hundreds of thousands are injured. Thousands of others will die from cancer, lung disease, and other ailments caused by exposure to toxic substances at their workplace. April 28th of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a day of mourning of the, for these victims of workplace accidents and disease. A day to remember the maximum sacrifice that they have been forced to make in order to earn a living. A day to renew approaches to governments and tougher occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation. A day to dedicate ourselves to the goal of making Canada's workplaces safer.
Thank you. Thank you. Whereas every year, more than 1,000 Canadian workers are killed on the job, thousands more permanently disabled, and hundreds of thousands are injured. And whereas thousands of others die from cancer, lung disease, and other ailments caused by exposure to toxic substances at their workplace. And whereas April 28th of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a day of mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease. A day to remember the maximum sacrifice they have been forced to make in order to earn a living. A day to renew approaches to governments for tougher occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation. A day to rededicate ourselves to the goal of making Canada's workplaces safer. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, by virtue of the power vested in me as Mayor of the City of Sioux St. Marie, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2015, as an annual day of mourning in recognition of workers killed, injured, or disabled on the job.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one moment. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have a number of people in the audience here for the accessible taxi bylaw. I suggest we remove that from consent and bylaws and deal with it. I understand there is a very minor amendment to the bylaw that is suggested we amend to the wording. The city solicitor can speak to what that amendment would be and why it's needed.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is a, I'm just going to pull up the section of the bylaw. It's Section 4.13, which talks about the authority of the Chief of Police in the event that the accessible requirements are not met by a cab company. And the way the bylaw currently reads is if there is a violation, the Chief of Police shall suspend the broker's license. And I believe this was discussed at the Police Service Board meeting prior to the matter coming before council tonight, and I think that there is consensus among all the stakeholders, the Police Service Board, and it's also Legal's recommendation that that verb "shall" be amended to "may suspend," so the Chief maintains his discretion.
Yeah, I think I should clarify that for the group. This was a matter raised by the industry, and it was discussed last meeting with Legal and myself and some industry partners. It hadn't been discussed at the Police Services Board yet because it was right post-Police Services Board. And the issue that the industry raised, and I thought it was a reasonable issue, is that the way the bylaw read, it wasn't permissive, it was mandatory. So there's a very short window with which the industry has to comply with this bylaw. So we're passing it today, presumably, and I expect it will pass. And it indicates in the bylaw that if the operators are not compliant, I think by the date is June 30th, then their license will automatically be revoked. And it was pointed out by the industry that even though they imply their best efforts, they might not be able to be compliant for things that might relate to insurance or availability of a vehicle. My feeling in listening to that was the Police Services Board should have some discretion. If the industry operators were making no effort to be compliant with the bylaw, then the license could be revoked. But if the industry operators were making an effort to become compliant with the bylaw, it wouldn't be fair to revoke the license for all their taxis because of something that was outside of their control. So in that sense, the only recommendation was that it be discretionary as opposed to revocation be discretionary as opposed to mandatory. And I'd like to acknowledge two groups in the audience. One is the large group of people who lobbied for this change and advocated for it. I think it's a positive change in our community. And the industry folks who met with me last week to indicate to me that they're on board with complying with this bylaw, and they're going to make their best efforts to comply with the bylaw in all of its terms and provisions, and that they see the need in the community for this service. So I would like to recognize that I did meet with the industry and they were, it was a productive meeting, and I got every sense from them that they intended to comply. And I'd like to thank the hard work that the kind folks did in moving this matter forward. So that gives you some context to the change. I sit in the Police Services Board, and I would be certainly inclined to revoke a license if it was my opinion that the bylaw was not being complied with intentionally. But I would certainly be inclined to give some people some latitude if they were making their best efforts to comply with the bylaw, but there was something outside of their own control. I think that this minor amendment allows the Police Services Board the latitude to do that. So I'm happy to answer any other questions about the bylaw from the Police Services Board perspective. Council Bruny is also on the Police Services Board, he can also address this. And any other legal questions should be directed to our city solicitor. Any questions from the council floor? Council Myers?
Okay. I was actually going to go to the report, not particularly the bylaw per se. Is that all right?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the report, I don't know who I'm directing this to, sorry. Who's report? It's Legal's report, right? So it was Matthew was the author, but I assume that our solicitor is here to answer questions on this. Matthew Caputo was the author of the report, but I'm assuming that Ms. Kenny is the one that will answer questions? Is that correct? Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The report reads in the background that the integrated accessibility standards include the transportation standards for municipalities. Section 79, these standards requires all municipalities to consult with their municipal accessibility advisory committee along the public and persons with disabilities within the community to determine the proportion of on-demand accessible taxicabs that are required. So then in the report, it goes on to say that it's approximately three. So I'm, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get a handle on, is it three? It's proportionate to our population, apparently. I just would like to nail down that number and have the assurance that we in fact are going to be meeting the proportion of the...
Are you able to canvas that, city solicitor?
I think I might be able to, with some assistance, thank you. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers, the change to the legislation required consultation with the accessibility group, and oddly, for accessible legislation, it was very broadly worded and left a lot of discretion to the communities that were licensing taxicabs essentially to canvas the community and make a recommendation as to what the appropriate number would be. And those meetings and consultations did take place over the past number of months. And the numbers that were ultimately decided were if a cab company has 35 licenses or less, one of those vehicles must be accessible. And if it is more than 35 licenses held, two vehicles must be accessible. And that seemed to be a palatable number for all interest groups.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think we have members of our accessibility committee here, and I'm trying to remember who on council sits there now. Council Butland, is it you? Okay. And Council Turco, who's not in the room. But perhaps either through you, Mr. Mayor, to our council representation or the committee members, are we comfortable that this will meet the need in our community?
Council Butland?
The answer is yes. And maybe Diane Morell, if you wish to speak to this.
Thank you.
Welcome to council.
Thank you very much. I've been a member of the Accessibility Committee for a number of years, and we're not 100% sure if three will meet the demand of accessible taxis in the long run. But we feel that that's a very reasonable starting point, recognizing that there are financial costs to the companies and not wanting to cause undue hardship to the companies that will be impacted, that provide service. We were trying to find some middle road, and we feel that the one per taxi company under 35 and two for over 35 was that middle road. So that's how we came to that. If, I suspect that if the demand is not met moving forward in future years, that this can be reviewed again.
Thank you for those comments. Does that answer your question, councillor?
Yes, if I could continue, Mr. Mayor. That was where I was going to go, is that what is the review opportunity to ensure that there is a process in place to revisit this? I don't know who should answer that, whether it's Ms. Kenny. Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Myers. The opportunity would be, I think the overall consensus was that we would grow with this and see how it fits the community. Certainly, the emphasis on accessibility is just going to increase. So I would expect in probably 12 months' time would be, the taxicab bylaw always goes through the Police Service Board first. So I think in probably 12 months' time would be an opportune time for the groups to reconvene in front of the board and make recommendations, and then those recommendations ultimately come here.
Okay, thank you. I'll have comments, Mr. Mayor.
We'll take other questions first. Council Butland, do you have a question?
No, that was a brief comment.
Do we have any other questions on the matter? Council Sheehan?
Yes, thank you very much. Council Myers asked my first two questions. My third question that I had was the process of reviewing these accessible taxis. How is that done? Is there a certain certification that has to be met? Is the Accessibility Committee consulted? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to perhaps our accessibility representative?
Well, to try and answer that, the legislation isn't as prescriptive as we would like it to be, so we'll certainly make our best efforts to represent the community that would be using the service. We're all in very close touch with the users. So we feel fairly confident that through the Accessibility Advisory Committee, that if the demand is not being met for moving forward, that we'll be able to bring those views back to the Police Services Board and then further to council.
Thank you very much. Are you going to stay involved and make sure that these cabs are what you need? So that's good?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two comments, one from Council Myers and one from Council Butland. We can start with Council Butland.
Yes, it's very brief, and I assure you that the Accessibility Committee is very diligent, and if they and we are not happy with the results, you'll hear from us. Definitely. Thank you.
Very good. Council Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my comment is I was really taken aback in the report where it identifies Thunder Bay has 21 accessible cabs, and it makes me think that probably what that owner has done is that their whole fleet is accessible. But I guess that what we want to encourage, I think it's important to make the point for the public who may not be as familiar with this as we are and as those involved have been. The fares, I understand, are the going market fare. There's no increase or no penalty, and that is to be the same market fare as it would be for anyone taking the taxi, so there's no extra cost being incurred by the customer there. So I think that this is a good night, tonight, to really flag this. I know I have an individual in Ward 2 whom I've worked with for several years, and he's really looking forward to having this opportunity to increase his mobility. And I think that it's really important that we do monitor this very closely, and I would expect that if the owners of the taxi companies see a viable economic upswing here by virtually a new client market, that they will expand their fleet. And I guess that's the biggest message I'd want to give tonight, is that to those who, and if you feel that it is not meeting your needs for some other reason, we need to hear about that, and the Accessibility Committee would want to hear about that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good step forward.
Based on the number of emails that we've received, I'm sure we will hear about it in the going forward basis. But thank you very sincerely for all your work. It was great work, and you've accomplished something here, and so we appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, if we can have the motion?
I have a motion by councillors Nero and Hoopinen, resolve that bylaw 2015-72 be a bylaw to amend Schedule 8 to bylaw 2011-161, a bylaw to regulate licensed and governed vehicles used for hire to convey passengers, including brokers, owners and drivers of taxicabs, limousines, wheelchair-accessible vehicles and hotel shuttles, be passed in open council this 27th day of April, 2015.
All in favor? That was as amended, correct, Mr. Clerk?
That's correct. That's the amended.
That was as amended to amend that one provision from "may," "shall" to "may." So all in favor? unanimous? Thank you very much. Thank you. It's carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I know there are some people in the audience tonight looking to deal with this following item, which has a very short presentation. It's the 2017 Brier. Ian McMillan of Tourism Sioux St. Marie is in attendance. We have the report under 7.8.1, and a motion by councillors Turco and Hoopinen, resolve that the report of the executive director, Tourism Sioux St. Marie, concerning the 2017 Brier bid be received, and the recommendation that the City of Sioux St. Marie confirm a contribution of $150,000 towards the event budget of the 2017 Tim Hortons Brier, and that should this event be awarded to Sioux St. Marie, the contribution be funded from the Economic Diversification Fund or such source as council deems appropriate.
Welcome to council, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor Provinzano, members of council. It's always great to be before you, especially when we have what we think is very enjoyable and positive news. So today, we're following up, as Clerk Malcolm had mentioned. For the past several months, you're all aware that we have been working closely with the Sioux Curlers and the Territorious Curling Club to solidify our attempt to make a bid for the 2017 Tim Hortons Brier. And this would make the first time, as most of you are aware, that this city has hosted that event since 1990, and a lot has certainly happened since that time. I have with me this evening two people that I would like to just briefly bring up, because they're key in helping us put this bid together, and they will be key in helping us pull this brier off should we be fortunate, or when, I should feel positive, when we win the bid to host this brier. So we have Tom Coulterman, a longtime member of the Sioux Curlers. He's the past chair of a number of curling events, and of course, the coach of the very successful Brad Jacobs Rink. We also have Brad Jacobs, the skip of the recently crowned World Curling Tour Championship Team, past brier champion, and of course, the current Olympic gold medalist. I also have John Pucci, who's our tourism specialist in sports with us here. He's going to do the legwork in terms of the actual bid for the brier. But before I ask Tom to say a few words, I just want to acknowledge quickly the citizens and businesses of this community. As you know, I was here before you a few months ago where we wanted to launch a deposit to check and see how many people would be interested in supporting attending the brier if we hosted here in the community. It was no surprise to me, I just knew it would tell a great story to the Canadian, Curling Canada, rather, of how much support we can count on if the event was held here. We didn't actually tell anybody what our goal was, but internally, we set, we thought it was a fairly ambitious goal of 1,000 deposits. And I'm very pleased to tell you, but not surprised to tell you, that we have over 1,200 deposits for people to come and watch that brier. So it's a great start, and it really ensures that if we, when we get this brier, it will make it an amazing success. So first, Tom, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, I would like to thank city council for believing in this project and for allowing the EDC staff, particularly Ian McMillan, John Pucci and previously Stephen Hollings, head of all of sport tourism, to go ahead with this bid for a Tim Hortons Brier in 2017. But more than anything, I really want to thank the citizens of Sioux St. Marie for supporting this brier bid with their overwhelming response to the preliminary ticket drive. It surpassed our initial expectations, and it should have a positive effect when Curling Canada officials have to make that final decision on where to hold the 2017 Tim Hortons Brier. The profile of curling in Sioux St. Marie is at an all-time high right now, due in large part to the success of Team Jacobs over the past two years. We do have a very large and active curling community in Sioux St. Marie, but even non-collers will admit to a newfound interest in curling. People like my own neighbors who are non-collers stayed up late at night or got up very early in the morning to watch Team Jacobs play at the Olympics. Non-collers still stop the players or even myself when we're around town, and they want to talk about curling. And that includes the status of this brier bid. At the same time, the profile of Sioux St. Marie itself at both the national and the international level has expanded due to the increased success and exposure of Team Jacobs. We've come a long way from that small curling town in northern Ontario, as reported in the Winnipeg Free Press right after Team Jacobs won the 2013 Olympic trials. Now Sioux St. Marie is the home of the Olympic champions in men's curling. As well, our success in hosting many large curling events will help us in so many ways to be great hosts of a Tim Hortons Brier in 2017, particularly as we try to put together the small army of volunteers that would be needed to run a brier. Our greatest hope would be that Team Jacobs would be competing in the brier in 2017, either as a defending Team Canada or as Team Northern Ontario. Up to this point, the EDC staff has worked very hard to put this package together. If we are successful in our bid for 2017 Tim Hortons Brier, it will be in large part for their efforts, and I want to thank them for that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the 2017 Tim Hortons Brier. If our bid is successful, we'll be in for an exciting time in early March, 2017.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulterman. Congratulations to both you and Mr. Jacobs for receiving the Medal of Merit recently. You both certainly earned and deserve that with your representation at Sioux St. Marie and your significant international accomplishments. So congratulations to both.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The next person I invite up here certainly doesn't need any introduction, so I'll just get out of the way and let him speak. get out of the way and let him speak.
This guy right here. Greetings, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and guests. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about the Tim Hortons Brier, and from a competitor's standpoint. When we arrive at the brier, you can't help but notice hundreds of volunteers wearing whatever jacket is chosen for them to wear that week. There's thousands of people that we end up meeting over the course of the brier week who plan their holidays around attending the Tim Hortons Brier annually. That is their holiday. It's not going to Mexico, it's not going to Cuba, it's going to the Tim Hortons Brier. And there's also millions of people at home, and who anticipate every year, and can't wait for the Tim Hortons Brier to be televised on TV. My point is, the Tim Hortons Brier is deeply rooted in Canadian tradition, and it's definitely one of the most prestigious sporting events held in Canada. And what a better way to showcase Sault Ste. Marie than through the Tim Hortons Brier, showcase to millions of people at home, thousands of people who could potentially travel here, what this community can offer, and what this community is capable of. So I'm really pumped, I really hope that we can get the Tim Hortons Brier. Rest assured, whether we get the bid or not, our team is going to be participating in play downs. We're going to be trying to represent Northern Ontario or Team Canada in that national championship. But we lost the brier final this year on Last Rock to an Alberta team in Alberta. So we would love nothing more than to have the opportunity to be the hometown team, and maybe redeem ourselves in that way. So whenever called upon for any promotion, any marketing, any type of media obligations, Team Jacobs will be there to fulfill as many obligations as we possibly can. So thank you.
One thing is obvious. If you remember those who were involved in the brier in 1990, the poster had a picture of Al Hackner representing Northern Ontario on the poster. I can guarantee you one thing, if we -- when we win the bid for this one, it'll have that gentleman's picture on it, for sure. So as you can see, and thank you from the folks that are here in attendance this evening, we have incredible support from our community to make this work. But in order to host this, we had to come up with approximately -- we need to talk the numbers now. We had to come up with approximately $850,000. It's obviously quite expensive to host such a big event. And the overall budget, that would be the local commitment for that. But I'm pleased to tell you that we have virtually all of that funding in place, or reasonably secured. First, and again, some of our partners from the tourism accommodations are here tonight. They have committed $100,000 from the accommodation partners of Tourism Sault Ste. Marie. I just announced this morning, through David Orazetti's office, Celebrate Ontario from the Provincial Ministry of Tourism has committed $300,000 for us to host the brier. NOHFC has provided with a letter indicating that our application meets all of the criteria, which tells me, as with the Carha event, we will have no problem moving forward for $150,000 to help support the event, and in discussion with the folks at FedNOR, again, this program or this event meets the criteria of the sporting program that FedNOR offers for funding, and again, we've used that for a number of events, including Carha. So timelines is the bid has to go in in early May. We're prepared to do that. We have all the pretty pictures and the documentation to go in, finalizing the budget. The selection is not until September, so it does give us some wiggle room where we will have anticipation of confirmation from NOHFC and probably FedNOR at that time, to complete the complete circle. So why it brings me here today, as was mentioned, we are looking for $150,000 support from the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And as you will see in your council package, we have provided details on the size and the scope of the event, so it gives you a better understanding of what the economic impact will be onto our community. So quickly, it will generate over 2,500 visitor days that will help fill hotels, providing direct tourism and operational spending in the neighborhood of $6 to $7 million. The overall economic impact, when you add into the ripple effect, will be approximately $15 million on our community. And we will also have our community exposed to an audience of over 12 million people on a daily basis on TSN, which covers the entire event. The event will also leave a legacy in our community, as it did the last time it was here, by assisting our curling clubs, upgrade their facilities, and help encouraging our younger residents to consider taking up the sport, and to work on that incredible upswing that Brad and his team has provided to our community. So Curling Canada has opened the door for smaller communities to make the bid and host the Tim Hortons Brier, as there's been a number of occasions in the past few years where the event was held in larger cities and the arena looked partly empty. I know for a fact, we all know for a fact, that if we are successful in our bid, we will make it the best brier in years to -- years, as they said the last time. We know we'll become a community gathering place around the SR Centre and the brier patch, and just like every time we host a major event in Sault Ste. Marie, it will be successful. So thank you again for your consideration, and we hope we are successful in our bid to bring that amazing championship back to Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilor Christian has a question or a common comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ian, congratulations. Brad Jacobs and Mr. Coulterman, congratulations. I have no doubt that when the brier does come to Sault Ste. Marie, it is going to be a very special and successful event. Obviously, the $150,000 investment is a big one, but I think we have to think in terms of what this is going to do in returns for Sault Ste. Marie, not just monetarily, but psychologically. I think any time we host events like this, whether it was a past brier, the Scotties, any event, as Siouxites, I'm sure I speak for a lot of people, there's a lot of personal pride, a lot of civic pride in that, and I think that you don't put a dollar figure on that, and I think that goes a long way, makes us proud of being Siouxites, and it also showcases us as a destination for the rest of Canada and the world. So I wholeheartedly support this, and I wish you all the best as we get organized from here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Myers.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, and then comments.
Sure.
Through you to Mr. McMillan. Hello, Ian. Great to always see you, because you're always here with good news. Actually, when I look at the Celebrate Ontario and the NOHFC, that's a combined total, if I understand correctly, that the province is looking at investing at $450,000, is that correct?
That would be correct.
And what we're looking at here is a paltry $150,000, out of the Economic Diversification Fund. And I believe that when we had Mr. Dodds here earlier at Budget Time and so on, that we had the assurance, and through our Commissioner of Finance, that we can absorb that. Through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps Mr. Freiburger could just confirm that for us, that there's no issue there, there's nothing else that's being put at risk as a result of this commitment?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, no, the only commitments, we have $500,000 in the budget for the EDF for 2015. We've only made one commitment of $28,000, so there's about $471,000 left for this year. So if we allocate 150, we'd be down to about $322,000 still available in 2015.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. McMillan, this $150,000 request is the only request associated with the brier bid from city council?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, yes. How they now work it is, there's just a holistic dollar that's provided to Curling Canada, and out of that local financial commitment, all of the expenses, including the brier patch, the rental of the SR facility, and all of the rest of that, is now up to them, based on their overall budget.
So in essence, you need the commitment now, but in terms of the actual cash flowing, if we had other projects coming forward, we have the next couple of years to deal with this at our Economic Diversification Fund, correct?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. Councilor Myers, I believe there's some flexibility. Obviously, we would not need it all upfront. Absolutely correct. I think it would be probably phased in over a two-year period.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, the $100,000 commitment from Tourism Sault Ste. Marie, if you could just take a moment and explain, that is made up, I believe, from tourism businesses in our community, who are partners there, so obviously, they see that as a good investment?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, yes, exactly, and thank you for bringing that up, it's very important. That is a financial commitment. We've heard talk of the destination marketing fee that is collected by our hotel partners through stays in their property, and it is the same fee that they generated, the half a million dollar contribution to the SR Centre when it was built originally. And so our hotel partners have, obviously, you know, they're going to benefit from the tourism input, but providing $100,000 shows their commitment to wanting to on-go and bring more and more sporting events, and I think you'll see an upswing in that in the years to come.
And also, if I understood from what Mr. Coulterman said, one of my questions was going to be whether we had an indication of the dates. We always have a general sense of when the brier is, but I believe it was early March?
Through, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, I believe, and Brad, you can help me on this one, it's usually the same time in March, second or third week?
Right. So it's at a time of year, if I'm not correct, when for the tourism industry? We've just come out of, well, I don't know if it's about a winter or not, what was I going to say there? Traditionally, we've come out of the peak winter season of skiing and so on, it's moving starting, hopefully, into what becomes a spring. So it's a good time of year for our tourism industry, is that not so?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Councilor Myers, absolutely. March is certainly a time of year that our city, our hotel industry, tourism industry at large, can certainly take the influx of visitation. It was the same time of year, roughly, that we hosted the Carha World Hockey Cup, and we all remember the influx of people we had for that.
Okay, and then thank you, Mr. Mayor. My couple of comments are simply, one is that I believe 2017 is also Canada 150, so it'll be a great year, and perhaps a theme that can be built upon, such a national event of Canada's in that year. And secondly, the, I want to draw back the attention to 1,253, or whatever that figure was, 1,200 and some, for the people who have put up, you know, the $50 commitment. So I think that for council, we should have a huge comfort level, that we've got an industry of privately owned businesses, for the most part privately owned businesses, I think they are all privately owned, as well as individuals, citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, who have strongly indicated that they want to invest, that they want to see it happen, and then our own province that's putting in considerably more than we are. So I have absolute nothing but great confidence in how this would come about. I actually moved back to Sault Ste. Marie in November 1989, right at the beginning of the whole 1990 brier undertaking, so I remember it well, as many do in this room. So I was a mere child, but I remember it well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we have Councilor Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. McMillan, I was looking at the STEAM model that was presented to us here, and it just seems a little light, in my mind. I think that it would, a brier would have a much more significance than this model presents. Is this a conservative model?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilor Sheehan, we were provided, that was the last time they actually ran a STEAM model on the brier. So I personally think, I agree with you, I think the numbers are probably conservative, but I think when running STEAM models, and I know we kind of did that with the Carha as well, even though it was quite large numbers, it's usually better to err on the smaller side than to overpromise and underdeliver. I think here in this community, you know, while we don't have the population base that some of the larger communities that hosted the brier do, I think that it will reflect in more, perhaps not more, but incrementally more, ticket sales at the box office watching the games in the arena. And that was always the concern, that you had big arenas that were half or three-quarters empty. And I believe past history will show that we will have a medium-sized arena that will be full all the time.
Thank you, and I agree with you on that point. The other questions that I had, have you had any discussions with some of our local air service providers, in the sense that, you know, taking a look at how cheap, and I'm going to use cheap as the word, it is to fly into Sault Ste. Marie now, as it was, it's probably way cheaper than it was in, like, 1990. I mean, is there any ideas of packaging with the, you know, the air carriers and the hotels to provide out of talenters with opportunities?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilor Sheehan, absolutely. As you know, Tourism Sault Ste. Marie was the first community, first tourism bureau in Northern Ontario that had an online reservation system, and it will be our goal, hopefully when we win the bid to host this brier, we will put packages together, certainly with our hotel partners, we'll try to roll in some other incentives with our attractions in Sault Ste. Marie, to round out a really good week-long stay in our city, with a lot of things to see and do. And we work closely with both of our airline partners, both Porter and Air Canada, and I believe that we will be able to offer a kind of a holistic approach to coming to Sault Ste. Marie, and doing all things touristy while they're here. So yes, for sure, to your point, absolutely.
And one more question on the money side of things, and it reminded me, when I was reminding my friends on Facebook to get their ticket in advance, I posted a picture of a Sault Ste. Marie Brier beer stein, which had the 1990 on it. Many people will remember them, they were done nicely. And then everyone was, you know, posting that they were getting it, and that would match their other merchandise they had. How does that merchandising work? Do you know yet? Does the city or the community get a little cut of the merchandise that is hosted?
Do you know that? I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilor Sheehan, I can tell you that things have changed since the last time we hosted the brier, I remember distinctly, because I chaired one of the committees, and being on the organizing committee, we had a dedicated committee looking after souvenirs. I don't think, I could be wrong, but I don't think there's quite the latitude we used to have, but souvenirs are always a major, 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 major part of any brier, whether it's the pins, or hats, or tuques, or things like that. So I don't anticipate there'll be a shortage of souvenirs with Sault Ste. Marie written all over them.
Appreciate that. I'll have comments.
Councilor Bruni?
Through you to Mr. McMillan, who's our competition? Who's applying for $2,000? Is there a cutoff date? Or you mentioned September is the cutoff date?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Bruni, I like to think we don't have competition. But realistically, we understand St. John's Newfoundland is making a bid, I understand Regina is probably also making a bid, and there was rumors of a potential fourth, but we haven't confirmed that one. But the other, the other two are apparently confirmed that they will be making a bid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Fatta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When will you know, just as a follow-up, when will you know who the actual, is there not a date, or some kind of deadline as to when you can fly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilor Fatta, I believe we will, the successful bidder will find out sometime in early to mid-September. We have to have the bid in to Curling Canada by the first week of May, so it gives them over the summer months to assess the bids, and come and do a site visit if they need to, and then make that decision in September.
I'm confident, Mr. McMillan, that when you're successful on this bid, that the selection committee and the organizers will be satisfied with their selection, because I'm sure this community will deliver. I'm sure it'll deliver attendance, and I'm sure it'll deliver enthusiasm, and I'm sure it'll deliver volunteers. So we hope the selection committee receives your bid fondly, and we should probably call the vote on the motion, is make sure that you have council's full monetary support, as long as our emotional support. So if we can have a vote on the motion, all in favor? So let it show that it's unanimous, Mr. McMillan, and we wish you the best of luck with the bid, and let us know if we can be of any further support.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you all, and thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, while we do have one more delegation, it is past 5:30. We do have two planning items on the agenda. They are both recommended for postponement at the request of the applicants. We'll maybe just wait a moment.
Yeah, sure. We'll give the audience a chance to filter out here. It's just, for the purposes of the viewing public at home, I had a specific request that when we get to the planning part, that we walk through each of the applications, but we won't be doing that today because of the nature of the applications before us, and the fact that there's two requests for deferrals. Mr. Clerk?
Under our first planning item, A-9-15Z, 297 McNabb Street, the motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that the report of the planner be accepted as information, and that council postpone this application to a later date.
All in favor? Carrie?
Item two, this was subject of a previous postponement, A-7-15Z, 2104 Rankin Road, motion by Councilors Turco and Hoopinen, resolve that the report of the planner be accepted as information and that council postpone this application to a later date.
Comment, Counselor Butland?
One question, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is here, and there's been difficulty, Counselor Christian, Butland, planning in the neighborhood. Do you have an idea when you might be coming back with the application?
Hopefully in two weeks. We're going to your holding.
Excuse me? You have to come down here, sorry. Can you come to the microphone so that viewing public can hear what you have to say?
Hello. Okay, so, Mr. Butland? Hopefully in two weeks, because we want to send out letters to everybody and have a meeting in the neighborhood. It was suggested last week that we have the meeting. I'm still not in favor of it, but Paul wants to do it, Paul Fink, who's the owner of the building.
Just for the record, ma'am, who are you?
I'm Tammy Stoneman Story.
Okay. And you're representing the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Counselor Butland?
Yeah, if I may, I think this may be very ambitious. I would too would like to have this hearing ASAP, but in order to get this correspondence to all of those who appropriately need to receive it, is there any issue with coming back in a month?
Absolutely not. I defer to your good judgment.
No, that could be a mistake, but thank you. Is that okay, Mr. Tonato?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think a month would work. We can certainly provide you with the mailing.
Labels, you probably want to give a little bit of lead time from when you mail them out to when you have the meeting. So you probably want the meeting two weeks from now, and then the hearing to be, or the application to be brought back two weeks after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So are your questions satisfied there, Counselor?
Thank you.
Sir, you have, can you stand up, please? Can you attend at the microphone? Yeah. Well, actually, this is a deferral.
It's a deferral.
Yes, sir. We're not actually hearing the application today. This is a motion to defer it.
Speak to it.
You want to speak to the deferral?
Yes. I issued a letter to city.
Can you identify yourself, please, sir?
Daryl Quinn, 55 Robbins Street, Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario, resident of the community for over 25 years. My house abuts behind the proposed rezoning. And the problem that we have is the implications of the inability of persons to be able to access the property through the Ministry of Labor to determine whether it's discussed.
We're not speaking to the application today.
I know, but the deferment of two weeks is insufficient for that process to be done.
Well, that will be an issue that we'll have to canvass with our planning department. The motion before us is a deferral. If you think it's an insufficient period of time, you vocalize that, and then council's aware of that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the resolution is postponement to a later date, so that is open-ended for you.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, the resolution is a postponement to a later date, so it's not even definitively turned in four weeks. So do we have any other discussion on the motion? Do we have a vote on the motion, all in favor?
Oh, that was easy.
Carrie?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we will now move to our final delegation. That is United Way Action for Community Change Report, Alan Hackett, volunteer facilitator, Action for Community Challenge Change, I'm sorry, is in attendance and is here to provide counsel with an update to this project.
Welcome, Mr. Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity this evening to speak to you, to provide a final update on the now-concluded Action for Community Change project. I think I'm going to touch on some of the critical issues in a chronological format, and first begin by explaining again what the Action for Community Change project was. It was a partnership started in the summer of 2012 between four United Ways in the province of Ontario, Leeds-Grenville, Northumberland, Oxford County, and Sault Ste. Marie and District. It was a two-and-a-half-year action learning project funded by the Ontario Trillium Foundation. And its purpose was to specifically drill down on a component, on a major issue of importance recognized by community residents, and by using a specific methodology and a set of protocols to move the needle forward in a positive, noticeable, measurable direction. The key issue there was an issue recognized by community residents. We began the project in the early fall of 2012 with what I would argue is the most critical portion of the project, undertaking engagement with residents of Sault Ste. Marie in a series of community conversations. These are kitchen table conversations lasting roughly two and a half hours with groups between six and 15 members maximum. We asked people to share their aspirations, their hopes and dreams for their community, and we further asked them to tell us the challenges they face in their everyday lives in having their aspirations achieved. The people of Sault Ste. Marie were certainly eager to be consulted, and they were not hesitant to provide their perspectives, to share their aspirations, and what their challenges were. After six months and several of the conversations, certain recurrent themes became noticeable as a part and parcel of every conversation. At that juncture, the project decided to create four theme or community narratives, which we developed from the recurrent commentaries of the people that we spoke with in the conversations. We took these recurrent themes, and we shared them with a group of experts in the community on social service matters to find out what they thought were the implications for our work. They were, as they had been delivered through a conversation in the morning of that particular event, surprised to learn that they had already seen through their own voice the same commentary as their fellow residents. The implications for our work were simply that we need to continue to address the residents of Sault Ste. Marie. We took time to share the learnings that we had gathered through that perspective with a number of different groups in the community, far and wide, traditional, non-traditional to social services. And then we listened very carefully again to what the experts had to say. We went away at that point in time, and with a working group established by the project, we decided, after a full consideration of the issues at play, which of the issues that we would select to drill down upon and move the needle in a positive direction. From that point of view, we moved forward with the working group to a mapping exercise to take a close look at all the critical components and indicators that were at play in deciding which of those issues to use. We then needed to take a quick look, and a more protracted look, at selecting an approach to deal with the issue. Now, members of council, you are aware of what that issue is? People in attendance, maybe not. The issue that we selected to work on was that of a skills mismatch or a skills gap that exists within the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and is impacting negatively on people's ability to get the good, well-paying jobs they want that are existent here, but for which there is a shortage of skills or the necessary competencies to obtain them. We further consulted with our community on an ongoing basis through the community conversation approach. And after spending about six months working on the component issues of what's created that particular problem across the community, we went forward and had a fortuitous event present itself, that being the establishment of a Neighborhood Resource Center in the Gore and Albert Street neighborhood by the Sault Ste. Marie Police Service, in company with the John Howard Society, and the Northern Institute, and the Downtown Dialogue Project. We decided at that juncture to request permission to place an employee on a part-time basis into the Resource Center, specifically to work in non-traditional hours on a proactive basis, walkabouts within the neighborhood, to elicit some measure of introduction and trust-building with residents of the neighborhood, and to specifically focus on the idea of being able to engage in conversations about job skills, job training, the need for upgrades, and what people might require in order to obtain a job, replace a job, or obtain a better job. We created a position, as I say, we entitled it Options Navigator. We moved that position onsite to the Neighborhood Resource Center in September of 2014, and they began work on a part-time basis, moving forward, engaging people in that form, specifically, again, proactive, walking the neighborhood, working non-traditional hours, often in evenings. And I'm here to tell you that in the three months between September and the conclusion of the project, they were able to move or transition two people without work of any form to a position of employment. We considered that a substantial success. I want to talk a little bit about some of the conclusions that we arrived at as a result of our work to date. Specifically, as they relate to our residents, they are certainly eager to be consulted by social service organizations, groups, and the leadership of the community to gain their perspective on what issues constitute the greatest challenges to achieving their aspirations for their community. They represent a vast repository of public knowledge that when combined with expert knowledge is likely to enhance the prospects for success of any major community undertaking. We learned that collaborative efforts for community impact that draw on a diverse group of non-traditional operators and people are more likely to gain traction across the community, and therefore improve the likelihood of reaching their intended goals. I think the last one that I would specifically focus upon is that targeted goals should be small enough to achieve and large enough to matter. Successes must first be measured in inches, I'm old, so I use that, and feet, before moving to yards and miles. Where are we moving from here? The Options Navigator continues to operate within the Neighborhood Resource Center. Funding was provided by the United Way to move from September through March of this year. Additional funding has been provided by the United Way Board to continue on with this project. And the final chapters have yet to be written. We've convened another group that is working now to creating indicators that are simple, scientific, easily understood, and most of all measurable. So reports can be provided to the community residents on this specific drilled-down portion of a major issue from their perspective, that being the skills gap or skills mismatch area within the community. We focused on the Neighborhood Resource Center because it was critical to maintain a fairly modest-sized geographical area with which to pinpoint our efforts. So, again, we are pleased that we chose a methodology embraced by the Harvard Institute, and I think have illustrated to the satisfaction of many residents, because we have conducted a number of feedback sessions, that their voice was heard, and that we are making some progress as we move forward. Final chapters, as I say, have yet to be written, but we are buoyed by what we see so far, and we appreciate the interest that council has chosen to exhibit for this project.
I'll entertain any questions. Thank you for your good work, Mr. Hackett, and for the good work of the United Way. Counselors, do we have any questions for Mr. Hackett? I think your report was very clear and straightforward to me, Mr. Hackett, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd probably like to clear off a few things before we get to consent. One of the items is Addendum Number Two, which has been placed on your desk. There, Addendum Number Two contains three memorandums of settlement for QP Local Three CSD, QP Local Three Public Works and Transportation, and QP Local Six Seven Civic Center Group. Perhaps what we can do, council, if there are any questions or comments relating to any of the three agreements, you can deal with them now. Following that, then I'll read each resolution in order for voting.
Council, floor is open. Are there any questions of our Commissioner of Human Resources? Counselor Turco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a correction on my 6.26, Mr. Clerk. I appreciate seeing my name there, but it's a misspelled.
Only one oh.
That's okay. I've been called worse, that's okay, Mr. Clerk. My question to the Commissioner of Human Resources, so, Mr. Nero, these three memorandums of settlements that we have in front of us right now, could you sort of, are these the only ones that we're dealing with as a city? Or these are the first memorandums? Can you elaborate on how many years these contracts are for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. Counselor Turco, these are all four-year proposed settlements. They are the, I guess, the middle segment of our overall 10 collective agreements to which we're involved with either directly or indirectly. We have EMS and fire already at the point of arbitration. We also have these three QP agreements out of the five that we are directly or indirectly responsible for, in front of you, to be considered for ratification. And then that will leave us with three direct collective agreements to be contemplated, plus two indirect, meaning the library and humane society.
So just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, through you, how many memorandums of agreement does the city have? Do you have that top of your head?
Besides these three here? We have 10 in total.
10, different aspects of our community?
Correct.
Now, the follow-up question would be also, four years, it's sort of unusual, isn't it, Mr. Nero? Is that common practice now around?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco. It's certainly been my second four-year ratification with the city. Three years sometimes is viewed as the norm. Three years sometimes is viewed as the norm, however, that has a lot to do with the constitutions of respective unions, which obviously I won't get into the debate about pros or cons. But certainly, we have seen generally the term go from shorter to longer in the last five to seven years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nero. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Any other questions, councilors? Councilor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Commissioner Nero, are the increases such that they are for each respective unit, are they offset by anything in particular which provides a savings to the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Shoemaker, yes, the actual cost to the city has been offset by some very creative restructuring of the benefit package with these three groups, which, again, we would hope to pass along to other QP agreements in addition to any non-QP agreements. But certainly, what you see is not the true cost to the city. They would have been offset by anywhere from 0.27% to 0.32% in general.
So, just as a matter of clarification, the effective increase is lower than the actual figure that's on the page?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Shoemaker, yes, we're looking at a 1.5, 1.52 net cost to the city for these agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nero, that begs the question, 1.5, 1.52 increase, is that consistent with municipal increases that we're seeing across the province of Ontario?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that would be actually on the lower end of the trends that we're seeing now, as attested to by a Ministry of Labor Conciliator, who explained to us during an unrelated matter that the settlements are now starting to once again approach 2% annually.
So, you're satisfied that the agreements that were negotiated were equitable both to the unions and to the taxpayers of the city of Sainte-Marie?
Yes, given our comparatives, absolutely correct.
Are there any other questions from councilors? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk?
We have three motions, Mr. Mayor and council. Our first one, a motion by councilors Nero and Hoopanen, resolve that the report of the Commissioner of Human Resources concerning memorandum of settlement 2015-2019, QP Local Three CSD be approved and that City Council ratify the memorandum of settlement.
All in favor? Carried.
Our second one is councilors Turco and Shoemaker, resolve that the report of Commissioner of Human Resources concerning memorandum of settlement, QP Local Three Public Works and Transportation be approved and that City Council ratify the memorandum of settlement.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councilors Nero and Hoopanen, resolve that the report of the Commissioner of Human Resources concerning memorandum of settlement 2015-19, QP Local Six Seven Civic Center Group be approved and that City Council ratify the memorandum of settlement.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think it's probably best if we deal with the PUC appointments item next, prior to going into consent. In order to deal with that, council, I need to separate Bylaw 2015-86 out of consent. It needs to be approved before we can proceed with the process. I have a motion by councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that Bylaw 2015-86 being a bylaw to amend council procedure, Bylaw 2013-100 be passed in open council this 27th day of April 2015.
Okay, so, councilors, we're first off passing the new procedural bylaw that governs our appointments. Do we have any questions about that bylaw? All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would note, of course, you've noticed that there is a supplementary report on the addendum, which just clarifies a few items and gives some more background, both PUC Inc. and PUC Services Inc. If I can just sum up a number of things about that. The past, council has appointed nine people to the Board of Directors of PUC Inc. The same nine people have also served as Directors of PUC Services Inc. Out of those nine members, three were council members appointed, and six were citizens. After the most recent municipal election, Pat Mick, who used to be a councillor and decided not to run for reelection, by virtue of her appointment by the shareholder to the board, retained her seat on the Board of Directors. However, we needed to add a member of council. In fact, we did add Mayor Provinzano to both boards in January to serve out the remainder of the council member term. What you ended up with is then 10 members on the Board of Directors. That is allowable under the Articles of Incorporation for PUC Inc. and PUC Services Inc. You can have a minimum of one to a maximum of 10. The process we will follow this evening is, the first thing we will do is decide upon how many council positions you will have on the Board of Directors. Right now, you have three. As long as the council is agreeable to continuing on with three members, we will then go through the process of selecting those three council members. The way the practice will unfold is, when you go through and select the council members, initially, you will nominate a council member to a position. The deputy city clerk will keep track of these people being nominated. There is nothing restricting a member of council from nominating themselves to the position. Once we get through the nominations, if there are more members nominated than positions to be held, we will then proceed with voting, and I'll go through that at that time. Once we've got the members of council sorted out, then we will move to the citizen appointments. So your first matter of business, then, is to confirm, if you will, that the number of council members on the Board of Directors remain at three. I would seek some direction from council on that.
Councilor Nero, you have a question?
Some, Mr. Mayor, some clarification. When we talk about three council members, is that the mayor plus three, or are you included as part of the three?
I think historically, and the clerk will correct me if I'm wrong, you've appointed three members of council, including the mayor. So, if the mayor wanted to sit or not, they were one of the three members of council. I have been appointed, most recently, my term is for a year, so you wouldn't be reappointing me today, as I understand, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we would need to consider that this evening because your appointment would need to be ratified again at the annual meeting in two weeks.
So, the question is, if we do it, how, we've already changed this process quite a bit from the perspective that we've never advertised publicly for applications for the PUC Board, and we've done that now, and we received a number of public responses to that opportunity. It's a question of whether we want to have more councillors on the board than we did before. Historically, you had three, and I'm certainly interested in continuing to sit on that board. If there's no more than two councillors that are interested in sitting with me there, it's a bit of a moot point. If there's only two of you that are interested in sitting with me there, then it would be three. If there's more than two of you that are interested in sitting with me there, then it would be a matter of increasing the number of councillors that we appoint to that board, and we can do that because we're the shareholder. So, there's nothing else we have to pass to do that. Just a matter of whether we think it's appropriate to have more than three of us on that board. So, Mr. Nero?
Just on that point, then, when we increase the council members, are we deleting the citizen appointment?
You would be.
We need to stay at 10.
That's static. That's a matter of, it's Articles of Incorporation, so we can't exceed 10.
Okay. Councilor Turco?
And a couple of quick questions. My other, Mr. Mayor, so, through the clerk, through you, through clerk maybe, so, the individuals that we're voting for tonight, are the eligible, can they, are they eligible to sit on both the PUC, I'm a little confused, PUC Services and also the Board of Directors? So, the same person, I could sit on both if I'm the example candidate?
Yeah, there's two separate companies, and the directors, the Board of Directors are, generally speaking, you've historically pointed the same board to both companies. So you could theoretically appoint two different boards tonight, but, yes, to answer your question specifically, the same, I can sit on both boards as I currently do.
Okay. And we're voting for both of them tonight, the PUC Incorporated and also the PUC Services?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilor Sheehan?
I'll just put it on the floor, I think that we should just stick with three, mayor plus two councillors, I think that number works well. Just move things along.
Do we have a general consensus that that's the case, and the council is largely agreeable to that? So that would beg the question, which two councillors are interested in joining me on the respective PUC boards?
To be nominated, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Yes, Councilor Butland?
I nominate the Councilor Christian.
Okay, great. Councilor Christian?
I'll accept a nomination.
Great. So, we have myself, Councilor Shoemaker, Councilor Christian, if there are, Councilor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask if Councilor Bruni is still interested in? Okay, thank you.
So, if we have any other nominations of councillors, Councilor Sheehan?
Is Councilor Fatt interested?
Councilor Fatt is no longer interested. So, seeing no additional nominees, then what we would do is we'd put Councilor Christian, Councilor Shoemaker, and myself on the list, which would leave us with seven spots that we would have to fill with citizen appointments. Sure.
Committee the whole, or, no, I guess we're not, eh?
No, we're not.
Councilor Myers, through, Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilor Myers, we can't remain in committee of the whole or go into committee of the whole because we need to possibly vote and do it in a recorded and open fashion.
Can I ask a question, then?
Yes.
Is it 10 that we have to, or it's up to 10?
Up to 10.
Right, so we could, in theory, do nine? It was nine in the past, I think. You're wanting to go to 10?
Well, you could, in theory, you could, in theory, do nine. Councilor Shoemaker?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the clerk, on a clarification on the procedure, so, do the councillors get to nominate either six or seven people from the list of interested persons? Is that how it works?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'm, there would certainly be nothing preventing a council member from nominating up to seven members on it.
And no more than seven, was I guess my question?
Yeah. I don't believe it would be considered proper to nominate more than seven because obviously you're nominating somebody to not be successful.
Thank you.
Councilor Myers?
Thank you. We've just been given a sheet. I thought that I understood that if we were going to fill the slate, that what we would now be required to do is to write down seven names out of the interested persons on this sheet. Is that not what we're doing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, the nomination process has to occur first. So you will, as council, you need to nominate. Right now, there is nobody to vote for, so to speak. Council needs, you have a collection of people who are interested in serving, you need to nominate from that grouping, and we may end up that you nominate all of them and we'll vote accordingly. You may nominate somewhat less than the number of applicants who have applied, but more than the seven positions that are available. Should that occur, then we will start to vote.
And I realize this is our first time doing this this way, but are 12 of us going to nominate three, four, or five, up to seven people? I mean, that's a nightmare. I thought I understood that we have a slate of interested persons and that we would, I mean, if it's a case of procedural, can we not just do a resolution saying that we nominate this slate of interested persons to be considered, from which we will appoint seven? Can't we do it that way? And then we simply write down our seven and give it to you? I thought we were doing it like that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Myers, whether you nominate seven, six, or one person, the deputy city clerk will be adding those names. It could happen that you're nominating people one at a time, whatever. You do want to end up with a slate that you're going to be either confirming or doing runoff voting on.
Do we have to nominate each member of council?
You don't have to nominate at all.
Okay, fine.
That's right, you don't have to nominate at all, and if Councilor Shoemaker nominates somebody, I can speak to that nomination and say I support that person being nominated, but I wouldn't then go and renominate that person.
Gotcha.
So, we're going to, each, anybody, if you want the opportunity to nominate someone to stand for the board or to speak in someone's favor, you can speak in someone's favor, they're added to the list, and then, depending on the length of the list, we vote.
Okay. I'm getting it.
Councilor Butland?
As I recall, I found it very convoluted, but I'm not the brightest guy. We talked about this voice or this vote, everybody votes at the same time.
Yes.
Is that still in place?
What will happen, should the nominated names exceed the number of positions available, you will do runoff voting. It's very similar to how it's been done in the past in closed session. What you will do is each councillor will fill out the names on a ballot provided of the people they wish to vote for. They will then put their own name, print their own name on the ballot, so that we know who voted for whom. The ballots will be collected, I will read them out, and the deputy city clerk will tally up the results.
So, it is not one candidate at a time? Each person will?
No.
The sheet in front of you is for voting purposes?
And you will be voting on the entire slate.
I have my own personal slate, and everybody may have a different slate.
That's correct.
Councilor Christian? Okay, very good. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Christian?
Cecilia Bruno? Doug Lawson?
Which board are we starting with?
PUC Inc.
So we're starting with the PUC Inc. board? Whether that changes your nominations or not?
Nope. Cecilia Bruno, Doug Lawson, James Greckel.
Jim Bonifaro, Jim Harmer, Rob Reed, and Bob Kates. Sorry, I'll, the, Bob Kates.
Okay, Councilor Nero?
Oh, you lost me. Was, I'm sorry, was Terry Renoni nominated?
He wasn't yet.
I'd like to nominate Terry Renoni, though they're up there.
Okay. Councilor Turco?
I nominate Pat Mick and Robert Kates.
Robert Kates was nominated, so we added Pat Mick. Councilor Bruni?
I nominate Bruno Barber.
Any other nominations? Councilor Sheehan?
I just got to take a look to see which ones I didn't have up there. I got those. Suzanne Farrell. And, just looking down the list here, just give me one second, Mr. Mayor. William Lindsay. I think Pat Mick's up there, yeah. Anthony Rossi, Robert Reed.
Robert Reed's up there.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses. That's good for now, I just got to read this closer.
Councilor Myers?
Larry Guerrero, I nominate.
So, do we have any other nominations?
Counsel Bruni?
Mark Hausen. Hausen? Was a present board member?
Yeah. Well, all of the parties that I was going to nominate have been nominated, but for the sake of being open about it, I was going to nominate Jim Bonifaro as an existing board member, Cecilia Bruno as an existing board member, William Lindsay, Terry Ranone, Anthony Rossi, and... Yeah, they're all covered. They're all covered. Okay, so we have a list, and that's a list of how many, Deputy Clerk? Not quite, no.
So Deputy Clerk, what, how many do we have on the list?
There are fifteen.
The Deputy Clerk's just going to split the list over, so you can, can get bigger. She'll put half of them over on the side. If you, just wait, Counsel Bruni, I think you'll see that she'll get the listing, so you can see it more easily, and see all the names at once. So council, is everyone able to see those names on the list? So council, I would ask then that you vote for up to seven. No.
No, no, that's not correct, sir. Sir, all of these people have been contacted in the last couple of weeks, and all of them have said they'd accept the nomination if they were nominated.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did contact all the people who had submitted their applications. They have, all the ones that you have before, you have indicated to us that they wish their names to stand. So just to review, council, you are voting for up to seven people on the list. You need to fill out your ballot, print your name on the ballot, and I shall come around and pick them up.
Can I just ask for clarification, why we're putting our name on it?
I will read your name out, and then indicate who you have voted for.
Okay.
That is the open part of the trans, the simultaneous recorded vote. Okay, council, I'll begin by reading each person's vote. As I'm doing it, the deputy city clerk will be tallying the results. And once finished, then she will post the results up on the screens. Counselor Lou Turco has voted for Pat Mick and Robert Kates. Counselor Shoemaker has voted for Jim Bonifaro, Cecilia Bruno, Jim Greco, Jim Harmer, Rob Reed, Robert Kates, and Anthony Rossi. Counselor Myers has voted for Jim Bonifaro, Larry Guerrero, Pat Mick, Robert Kates, Rob Reed, and Cecilia Bruno. Counselor Fada has voted for Pat Mick, Cecilia Bruno, James Greco, Bruno Barben, Jim Bonifaro, William Lindsay, and Suzanne Farrell. Counselor Christian has voted for Cecilia Bruno, James Greco, Douglas Lawson, Jim Bonifaro, Rob Reed, Pat Mick, and Robert Kates. Counsel Bruni has voted for Robert Kates, Jim Bonifaro, Mark Hausen, Terry Ranone, Doug Lawson, and Cecilia Bruno. Counselor Hoopinen has voted for Pat Mick, Robert Kates, Bruno Barben, Jim Harmer, Cecilia Bruno, Larry Guerrero, and Douglas Lawson. Counselor Barben, or, sorry, Counsel Butland has voted for Bruno Barben, Cecilia Bruno, William Lindsay, Robert Reed, Jim Bonifaro, Terry Ranone, and Bob Kates. Counsel Nero has voted for James Greco, Cecilia Bruno, Robert Kates, Terry Ranone, Bruno Barben, William Lindsay, and Jim Harmer. Counselor Sheehan has voted for Pat Mick, Terry Ranone, Suzanne Farrell, Anthony Rossi, Jim Bonifaro, Rob Reed, and Cecilia Bruno. Mayor Provenzano has voted for Cecilia Bruno, Jim Bonifaro, Rob Reed, Terry Ranone, William Lindsay, Anthony Rossi, and Robert Kates. We'll just wait for a moment while the deputy city clerk puts the results.
So there's eleven voting, so six, six is enough.
Six is enough. Cecilia's there, Jim's there, Rob's there. Well, actually, you know, it'd be the top seven vote-getters, but they need six votes. So I think we might be one short. So Jim, Cecilia Bruno's there. Jim Bonifaro's there. It's two. Bob Kates is there. Rob Reed is there. Pat Mick is there. One, two, three, so we have five, and then we have... Well, we have, we have one person at five, and then the number at four, and three, and, yeah. Well, I think we have to ask, Mr., there's, yeah.
Council, you have five members now that you've chosen by majority. You would need to have a second round of voting now for the two remaining positions. I guess I would need direction from council if you're not going to...
I don't see why, with all these parties interested, Counsel Myers, I don't see why we wouldn't do a full slate. So we each get two votes?
For this round of voting, you will vote for two names out of the remainder, remaining names, with the exception of the lowest vote-getter cannot be considered. They drop off the ballot.
So you pick two of the remaining names?
Two of the remaining names. If you just hang on a second while the deputy city clerk rearranges the listing. Once the listing is finished, it's been requested that I read the names out for anyone whose eyesight isn't quite good enough to read it.
Mark Hausen should not be on the list, if I'm correct. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Counsel Christian?
Point of clarification, how many have we officially voted in so far, besides the city counselors?
Eight. No, five.
Five. So the remainder, we're, we're voting for two more?
Two votes.
Okay.
Oh, council, for the remainder, you have two votes. The names are as follows: Doug Lawson, James Greco, Jim Harmer, Terry Ranone, Bruno Barben, Suzanne Farrell, William Lindsay, Anthony Rossi, and Larry Guerrero. You need to vote for up to two of those.
So I think we're, we're ready to go, if we can have the clerk?
The results of this round are as follows. Counselor Turco has voted for James Greco and Larry Guerrero. Counselor Sheehan has voted for William Lindsay and Suzanne Farrell. Counselor Hoopinen has voted for Doug Lawson and Jim Harmer. I do have one ballot that the name wasn't indicated of which counselor. I'll leave that till the end, so we can figure out who it is. Counselor Christian has voted for Doug Lawson and Jim Greco. Counselor Shoemaker has voted for Terry Ranone and Jim Greco. Counselor Nero has voted for Bruno Barben and William Lindsay. Counselor Myers has voted for Larry Guerrero and Bruno Barben. Counselor Fada has voted for James Greco and William Lindsay. Counselor Butland has voted for Bruno Barben and Jim Harmer. Mayor Provenzano has voted for Terry Ranone and William Lindsay. And who haven't I mentioned?
Counsel Bruni.
Counsel Bruni has voted for Terry Ranone and Doug Lawson.
We, we don't hit the majority on any of them. We ain't hitting the majority on them. We'll drop some more. Numbers aren't getting...
Council, we have not gotten a majority on any of the names. We'll have to hold another round of voting, but we would drop off, in this case, I would suggest, the lowest two names, Anthony Rossi and Suzanne Farrell.
Would we want to consider, Mr. Clerk, dropping off the twos at the same time? I mean, I'm in council sands, if we wanted to just drop off zero and one, that's fine, but the same thing could happen, yeah.
I, I suggest, Mr. Mayor, that you do just stick with the two I mentioned.
Okay. So I don't have... Give a sheet for me?
Use the same one as last time. Yeah, yeah.
I just used...
Yeah, those two.
Okay, for this round of voting, counsel, Counselor Shoemaker has voted for Jim Greco and Terry Ranone. Counselor Nero has voted for Bruno Barben and William Lindsay. Counselor Myers has voted for Larry Guerrero and Bruno Barben. Counselor Fatah has voted for James Greco and William Lindsay. Counselor Butland has voted for Bruno Barben and William Lindsay. Counselor Sheehan has voted for William Lindsay and Terry Ranone. Counselor Turco has voted for James Greco and Larry Guerrero. Counselor Christian has voted for Doug Lawson and James Greco. Counselor Bruni has voted for Terry Ranone and Doug Lawson. Counselor Hoopinen has voted for Doug Lawson and Jim Harmer. Mayor Provenzano has voted for Terry Ranone and William Lindsay.
Other one? Sorry, what is, does she have five there? What does she have on top? That's three, yeah. No, he's not. Jim and Larry would be, are we dropping two again?
Counsel, we will require another round of voting. This time, the names of Jim Harmer and Larry Guerrero will drop off. Open ballots around. Counsel, for this round of voting, Counselor Sheehan has voted for William Lindsay and Terry Ranone. Counselor Turco has voted for James Greco. Counselor Christian has voted for Doug Lawson and James Greco. Counselor Shoemaker has voted for James Greco and William Lindsay. Counselor Nero has voted for Bruno Barben and William Lindsay. Counselor Myers has voted for Bruno Barben. Counselor Fatah has voted for James Greco and William Lindsay. Counselor Hoopinen has voted for Doug Lawson and Terry Ranone. Counselor Bruni has voted for Terry Ranone and Doug Lawson. Counselor Butland has voted for William Lindsay and Bruno Barben. Mayor Provenzano has voted for William Lindsay and Terry Ranone.
Bill gets it. Yeah. No.
No.
Yeah, she's, so, so there's one left.
So Bill's in, and the three drops off.
Yes. Counsel, you have the remaining names of James Greco and Terry Ranone, and you will vote for one.
One. No, you have two names. Well, it can't be tied.
No. Susan abstained.
We're just going to deal with this now.
Counsel, for this round of voting, Counselor Myers has chosen not to submit a ballot. Counselor Nero votes for James Greco. Counselor Christian votes for James Greco. Counselor Bruni votes for Terry Ranone. Counselor Sheehan votes for Terry Ranone. Counselor Hoopinen votes for James Greco. Counselor Shoemaker votes for James Greco. Counselor Fatah votes for James Greco. I have a blank one again. We'll put that one at the end. Counselor Turco votes for James Greco.
That's it. That's it. It's done. He has to announce him for the record. Yeah, he is. Yeah. I voted for Terry Ranone.
Okay. Counselor Chris, or Mayor Provenzano voted for Terry Ranone. Counselor Turco, I had read yours already, right? I believe I mentioned yours. I do have a vote that doesn't have a name attached to it.
We understand that. We understand it's only nine. No, we have eleven. You abstained, that brings us to ten. He's got another blank one.
And that would be Counselor Butland voted for Terry Ranone.
Okay. So Counsel Butland also voted for Terry Ranone. In any event, Justice Greco has six votes, so that carries it.
Counsel, just as that is getting ready, might I presume that you're content to let the slate for PUC Inc. also serve as the slate for PUC Services Inc.?
Well, I think that's what we've historically done.
Yeah.
So unless there's a reason to change it this time around, I think we would just proceed as, as you've done in the past. Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only thing that I would mention is that there's more names on PUC Services that we didn't consider.
That's right.
If we, if we use the same slate.
The issue would be whether the names of the people we just nominated are also on PUC Services, and I believe that the same people applied. Is it fair to say the same people, the people that applied for PUC Inc. and were successful are all on PUC Services' application roster?
We could check that. I will have to check that.
I recognize that. No, it's, it's, oh, it's two different applicant pools. Yeah. Sure, we could go through it again.
I guess, I guess if it was the same slate, the number, the same people who had applied for both boards, I, I think it would, would be okay to move one board to the other slate, but when there's more names on the second one, I think there's one more that we wouldn't have considered in the first slate.
Yeah, there, there, the applicant pools are largely the same, but there are a couple, a couple additional applicants on the one pool.
Correct, and that's the only point I want to bring to counsel's attention.
We can, we know how to do it. Now we can proceed and elect the second board if counsel wants to do, proceed accordingly. Counsel Sheehan?
Doing this the first time, I guess that begs the question, does any council want to nominate those two new names that are on the, on this particular slate as opposed to the others? So that, that's the question I ask of mayor and counsel, if anybody wants to put those two names forward to add to that slate that we already elected.
I think, just for clarity, we just finished, we just finished PUC Inc., and I think PUC Inc. has the additional names. Counselor Nero, you, you were looking at the additional names. They're on PUC Inc.'s applicant pool.
That's correct.
We finished PUC Inc., so...
No, PUC, PUC Inc. Board of Directors, and this one's PUC Services Inc. is, has the two extra names. So
I think PUC...
There's two additional names.
On the services?
I'm sorry?
On the services, Inc.?
On PUC Services, which we have not done yet, correct? There's, there's a candidate, Robert Longo, and candidate David Rose, who were not on the first slate.
That's right. So there were more applicants for the PUC Inc. Board. There were twenty applicants. There were eighteen for PUC Services. You're correct to point out there were two applicants for PUC Services that weren't on the PUC Inc. Board. They didn't apply to the PUC Inc. Board. So I guess the question is, looking at PUC Services, if anybody's interested in those two applicants being on the PUC Services Board, it'd be a matter of nominating them and giving them that opportunity, and then we would have to go through the process again. If you're not, if you're not indicative, or if there's nobody on the PUC Services Inc. Board that you would like to see serve in favor of the PUC Inc. Board, then we'd be going through the same process for the, with ultimately the same result. Would counsel agree with, you understand what I'm saying? So if everybody has a look at the PUC Services Inc. Board, or the applicants for PUC Services Inc., and determine if there's anybody on that list that you would like to see have an opportunity to be considered, we can go through the process. We've been through it. So I think the two... So it would be the two names that you're pointing, there's, what are the two names? David Rose, and what's the second name?
Robert Longo.
Yes. So is anybody interested in nominating Robert Longo or David Rose? If that's not the case, then there would be no change. Would you agree with that, Counsel Nero?
Yes, I would. Up because I, for clarification.
It's a fair point. But all the other applicants for the viewing public, all the other applicants are on, in both pools. So seeing nobody nominating those two individuals, would, would the council at large like to, or does the council at large support having the... Mr. Clerk?
As long as that's counsel's direction, to appoint the same slate for the second board, I have the following resolution. Then would be a motion by counselors Nero and Fatah, resolved that Mayor Provenzano, counselors Christian and Shoemaker, and the following citizens, Cecilia Bruno, Jim Bonifaro, Rob Reed, Robert Cates, Pat Mick, William Lindsay, and James Greco be recommended for appointment to the PUC Inc. Board of Directors and PUC Services Inc. Board of Directors, which will be considered by city council acting as the sole shareholder at the upcoming annual meeting.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's probably best that we now move into the consent portion of the agenda.
Okay, counselors. Are there any matters on consent that Counsel Turco, start with you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one, 6.19, resurfacing of city streets.
Okay.
Pages 146 to 148. Mr. Elliott, I believe he's moving to his chair. And this has been a discussion of interest over the last several years. Mr. Elliott? I know it's about funding, but could you kind of go through the process that we, I think this question's been asked before, how we arrive at the list, because, you know, Sault Ste. Marie has a number of streets that need to be resurfaced. So how do we come up with this list?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco, we have a road management system that you may be familiar with, where we score roads. We score every road once every two years for a number of things, structural capacity, or structural condition, drainage, surface, et cetera. For the resurfacing program, we use the surface, we score the surface, and we have a, an inventory of streets on a list that, that we know need resurfacing and within the next couple of years. But we actually wait until the spring to see which ones have really started to fall apart. So we, we put the final list together in, over the last couple of weeks in preparation. Once we know what the budget is, then we fit the roads to the budget. You gave us a budget last week, so we built a resurfacing program. I would add, there are a handful of streets that you approved last year that we didn't get to because of the prices of tenders. Base Line is an example. Fourth Line is another example. Those are streets that we assume should be on the list because they were recommended last year.
Just to follow up, I'm thinking specifically Ward Four, of course. With all due respect to the other fellow counselors. But how do we get, how do you get on the list, though? Because there's a number of streets that are used quite frequently, particularly, you know, in downtown area by many Siouxites. How do we get on that list to future years, next year, the year after?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Turco, I suppose the short answer is, is when your word, when your road gets the worst, then it moves to the top of the list. We know Queen Street downtown is, is due for surface. We're losing Bay Street. Actually, Bay Street is a good example in your ward. It's part of the capital program, and our plan is to resurface it this summer, assuming the EA is complete.
Which is used by everybody in Sault Ste. Marie and visitors alike, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else in 6.19? Seeing none, Counsel Bruni?
19.
You know, I'm, oh, you're on 6.19.
I'd like to comment.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. To Mr. McConte, Mr. Elliott, regarding the, what is the difference between Class C to... Class C to Class B for asphalt?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Bruny, a Class B road has a hot mix asphalt surface and roadside ditches. A Class C road has a tar and chip surface. We call it surface treatment. There isn't a hot mix spreader with new asphalt. It's, you see it, it's stones dropped into a tar that's dropped onto the surface. It's cheap, but it doesn't work very well.
It's cheap, but it...
It's cheaper, but it doesn't work as well as a Class B road. That's why, as you read in the report, we're trying to convert, we're starting with bus routes. We're trying to convert surface-treated bus routes to Class B bus routes.
One item, the Class B regarding People's Road, is it Class B? Sorry, Class A, People's Road from Second Line to Everett, cold-in-place recycling and new asphalt service, surface. Would this be the whole, the whole corner of Second Line going on to Wellington Street? Or is it just from Second Line? And what are we looking at, maybe a few hundred? Is it, it's not even a hundred yards, or maybe a little more than a hundred yards? Is the whole corner going to be, or the whole intersection going to be surfaced?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruny, the whole intersection's going to be surfaced. We are going up People's Road to Everett Street, which is where we stopped on the People's Road resurfacing.
Yes.
And to the east, we're going to the railway tracks.
To the railroad tracks. So the drainage of water should improve at that intersection of Second Line and People's Road?
The surface drainage will improve marginally, yes.
Marginally?
Well, you won't have the whole, the water in the potholes that you have now.
Yes, okay. Now, would this, would this work be during the evenings, or my concern is regarding the traffic time, especially if the, if a train is going by on Second Line and John, John Street, there is usually a lineup of vehicles to cross Second Line, railroad tracks, but, and that would interfere with, especially if the lanes are going to be to one, one each way? Would there be a concern there?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruny, we can work around railway tracks. Second Line will always have one lane open in each direction for this. We have, we are toying with the idea of doing the intersection at night. That's what we did last year at the corner of Second Line and Great Northern Road. That may be a consideration for that intersection as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else, Counsel Bruny?
I, yes.
Oh, you are on 6.19? Okay, if you're, it's on 6.19, go ahead.
Sorry, real quick, I'm just really glad to see that as part of this list, the expanding of the access for the drop-off and pickup at SR Center on the south side of Queen is included in this, and that was something that was critically important, and I'm assuming that it'll also be kept clear in the winter. Would that be a question for Mr. Girardi through you, Mr. Mayor?
I think it would be.
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Marz, yes, it'll be cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for 6.19? No, Counsel Fatah, 6.19?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. No, I'm just going to just follow up on Counsel Bruny's comment about Class C versus Class B. So i- if a resident, say, for example, on the Moss Road asks you or I, why are we doing, being done as a Class C rather than a Class B, what would be the answer to that question?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Fatah, the answer is, we have insufficient funds to convert streets to Class B, and there are many, of many, many kilometers of Class C streets that we'd like to put an asphalt surface on, but we're, you're going to have to continue to use surface treatment, because you can go almost three times as far with surface treatment.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's it for 6.19? Any other matters in the consent agenda? Counsel, Counsel Bruny, do you have another matter?
Item 6.16, and I guess question to Mr. Dolcetti and to Mr. Girardi, the 925 People's Road, with installation of the concrete head wall and grate, I guess I'm looking for an opinion, would, will this stop our flooding problems that's happening on Elliott, Rossmore, and Fairway? And also, what else has been completed to avoid the flooding in that one area? And I guess maybe Mr. Girardi would be able to comment on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Bruny, presently, we have a 48-inch pipe at 925 People's Road. That pipe has no trash rack to prevent the debris from entering the pipe, so installing that concrete head wall will allow trash, a trash rack to be installed, preventing anything from entering. The trash rack will be designed so it can be cleaned easily during a storm event. Now, as far as work that was done to prevent future flooding, to assist with the reduction in debris being carried in the ditch during a storm, we had our forestry team cut the brush and small trees along the bank, and while they were in there, they reditched, so it's, the ditch is much wider, much larger. They actually started from north side of Elliott Hill along the railway tracks to 925 People's Road, and the ditches, like I say, will handle more water and certainly will assist with the flooding issues that you've had in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else in 6.16? Anybody else on 6.16? No? You're on 6.16, Terry?
Yes. The, this is the one on the, with the Ontario Avenue, Summit Avenue as well. The question on that particular part of the report, in changing the diameter of the storm sewer from 300 millimeters to the proposed 675 millimeters, how confident are we that that will be enough? Is there a larger diameter that we could go to, and how much would that cost? Through you, Mr. Mayor to Engineering and Planning.
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Sheehan, we design the, it's, the storm sewer is part of what we call our minor storm sewer, or minor storm sewage system, as opposed to your flood control channels in the West End. We design for a 10-year storm generally, for, for the storm sewers. So this, it brings the diameter of the pipe to our design standard for, for storm sewers. You'll notice in, in Dan's report, downstream, there's pipes that are below that, so it's a question of just achieving the design standard, and that's what we would recommend.
And still on that subject, supplementary question, note that, this is in tandem with the, with the proposed Pym Street upgrade and making that larger, that there is still property to be purchased and negotiated. Just in the scenario, what happens if that does not happen, if we are not able to do that? Can we still go ahead with this plan?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Sheehan, what would happen in that case is, we'd essentially be transferring the surcharge problem downstream a bit, and you'd have more water on Pym Street than you would on Summit.
So elaborate, please elaborate a little bit on that without...
When a storm sewer, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Sheehan, when a storm sewer surcharges, the system fills up and the water can't get in it, and you find downstream water coming out of catch basins. Primarily, when those situations, we rely on overland flow, just lots of water essentially heading down the hill on, on the road. That's what we saw twice in 2013. Most of the city was relying on that kind of overland flow.
And just continuing on with some of the conversations and some of the, that we've had in the past, and some of the different plans we saw, talking about diverting some of the, the water through past the, what used to be the car lot there, down through into that ravine or down that area, is that still part of the plan, or is that...
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Sheehan, I believe you're referring to the environmental assessment we're doing for two flooding areas upstream. So yes, we are considering the storage of stormwater in natural ravines.
Which will also help alleviate the water in that area?
In those areas, yes. That, frankly, that doesn't have much to do with what we're talking here, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It for 6.16? So, Counsel Bruny?
Thank you. Item 6.17. Oh, did you want to speak to that one?
6.16?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Elliott, just the work that you've reported on 6.16, any timeframe estimate for completion of this? Is it going to be all summer, or by fall? Just roughly, and nothing to hold, we don't know too.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor to Counsel Nero, our intention will be to complete the design and tender it and complete it this year. We'd concentrate, have the contractor concentrate where he needs to get asphalt down, and the other jobs may happen a little later. But our intention is to do it this year.
All three?
Yes, all four.
All four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, Mr. Counsel Bruny, you're on for 6.17?
6.17 to Mr. Elliott or Mr. Dolcetti, will the city also be, will the city property, buildings be included in the request for proposal? The buildings in 2008 were assessed, and the asbestos inventory and the hazard assessments, were they all removed, or is there another inventory for those buildings included in the two treatment plants and the 18 sanitary pump stations? Would they be included in it, or are they strictly at the pump stations?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruny, in 2008, there was about 95 buildings that were looked at, and they included municipal buildings, but also housing that was, at that time, under the housing program. In this particular case, we're looking at only municipal buildings in terms of, as you mentioned, the two sewage treatment plants, as well as all the pump stations. So from the 95, 96 buildings that were done in 2008, we're down to approximately about 28 buildings. And cost back in 2008 was about $117,000. It's a totally different program in that regard, and now we're budgeting as part of the report about $150,000. And that includes all those pump stations, about 18, 25, plus the two for east and west main plants.
So, back in 2008, the 95 buildings, including housing, those, the asbestos has been all removed? It's safe now, is it, or, or you're going to be reviewing some of them?
No, I think the question is, those have been assessed, and they are, in fact, they were handled through another program. In that particular case, they were assessed to the point where if there were any issues of asbestos, for example, that was removed. However, this is not just looking at asbestos. There's other about 12 substances that are basically being looked at, to be assessed and decided as to what has to be done in terms of remediation.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for 6.17, Counsel? Counsel Bruny, do you have any more?
I have 6.3. Just bring it up on my screen here. Change to banking. There was just a question that I picked up. It states, on the recommendation states signing checks and other legal documents on behalf of the City of Sault Ste. Marie. Can I have an example of what other legal documents?
Sure, Counsel Bruny, I think, when I asked about this particular matter, Counsel Bruny, because I did prior to Counsel, my understanding is, this is just maintaining the status quo, but the, we'll have an incoming Finance Commissioner and an incoming CEO on an interim basis, so it's to maintain the status quo. But in any event, I'm happy to have Counsel Commissioner Freiberger answer your question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruno, Bruny, sorry, that just relates to banking, banking transactions. So it's, this is a, the signing authority's with the bank, dealing with signing checks and other banking-related agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in 6.3? Seeing no questions in 6.3, Counsel Bruny, do you...
Just one more, 6.23, accusation, accuse, how do you say?
Acquisition?
Acquisition of property. How did this occur, I guess, and this would be to our Commissioner of Legal, Nula? Would it be?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Bruny, it was just really oversight, and the homeowner brought it to our attention, so we're just clarifying and oversight, really.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? 6.23, none? Counsel Bruny, that was it, so I have Counselor Christian next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not sure if I should direct this to Mr. Girardi or Commissioner Freiberger. 6.6, were there only, maybe I'll, I'll give this to Mr. Girardi. Were there only two tenders, or were there only two tenders that met specifications?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, only two companies submitted.
Okay. Subsequent question, supplemental, Mr. Mayor through you to Mr. Girardi, is there a reason in the tenders that there's such a huge difference between the low bid and the $171,000? Was there anything that stood out, or is it just the way they costed their...
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, sometimes these companies get very busy, because that's all they do, they just paint lines. Let's just say, in this case here, probably the, the first company wasn't being as aggressive, because they have enough work already. As you can see, under remarks, their work completion was going to be in 90 working days, where the company that was successful is going to do it within 30 working days. And quite frankly, they did it for us last year, and I think you'll probably see it done in a week and a half or two weeks.
Supplemental to that, in the $103,000 tender, does that include overnight stay and accommodation? Do they factor that in? Is that a separate item that shows up in their tender, or is it just built into the cost?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, that's everything, all included.
Yeah, I just...
All the lines.
Okay, I just, I always have a, whenever I see two, two bids, it always concerns me, and it's quite evident here that if, if the Guelph, Ontario team was, every bid is busy and threw in a high bid as well, because there's not enough competition and because there's not enough bidding, we might have been stuck with a 50% higher bid and acceptance than we normally should. So there's, to Mr. Girardi, there are no local companies that bid on this at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, there are no local companies who are in this type of business. We have a very difficult time, or else they would have obviously, you know, submitted to the tender. It's been a difficult thing to get people to do, because of course, it's probably the type of business that you can only do a certain time of year, and everybody wants it all at the same time. This company, I know, runs from Sudbury to Elliott Lake to Sault Ste. Marie and on. So we just kind of tender in, and it's part of their package. We're kind of excited that they wanted to take it, and that is a competitive price. That's a good price.
And, and thank you. One final question to Mr. Girardi, and, and you're right, I mean, it's, it's certainly much lower than the other bid. Is there, have we ever costed this? Do we have the expertise in-house, or is it too cost prohibitive to have staff do this type of work?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, we do have the capabilities of doing it in-house. The only problem is, it's not our area of expertise. We don't do it well, or as well as companies like this. We run a program like this, and we are still doing painting in September. That's not acceptable. As you know, we're pressured when we have travelers coming through the city, especially people who are certainly not familiar with our city. When you don't have lines down, it creates a lot of problems and, and creates a lot of calls. That's why we started going down this road, and then when you find a company that's doing this every day, they become very efficient, and they get it done in a short period of time.
Thank, thank you very much. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Christian. Counsel Nero? Sorry, I was just taking...
I didn't have my hand up. Oh, sorry, I thought you did. It must have been Shoemaker, Counsel Shoemaker's hand, then I...
It must have been Counselor Shoemaker's hand that I, go ahead, Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item six point one point two.
Six point one point two, I think that's been taken.
Oh, has it been taken off?
I think it's been taken off the agenda. Counsel, Mr. Clerk, this is the Heritage Tax Rebate Program.
No, six point one point two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a point. I thought it was six point one-two, which was, was taken off the agenda. Six point one point two?
On the addendum.
Six point one point two is on the addendum. Perhaps I can just mention to counsel, I apologize for the mix-up on the addenda, you did get a number of documents given to you. By way of explanation, we did upgrade our software, received an upgrade last week and we've had some teething problems with it.
Six point one point two is the Algoma Public Health report.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, I suppose, Counselor Bruny, who is the Chair of the Board. Mr. Bruny, why hasn't the KPMG report been released?
I have just a few comments, just to respond to that, if that's okay?
It's absolutely okay.
I mean, I don't know if these questions should be directed to me because, because I sit on the board, doesn't necessarily that I have to, I should be answering it. The question should be directed to Algoma Public Health, but in respect, I will answer some of these questions that I can.
Would you like to make a few comments beyond that, Counselor Bruny?
I would like to make a few comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Just, so your question basically is why hasn't been released? First of all, I'd like to go into a couple of points, that the Board of Health for the District of Algoma Unit is the governing body for Algoma Public Health. The Board of Health is a separate board established by the provincial public health legislation, the Health Protection and the Promotion Act. On January twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, the Board engaged KPMG's Sudbury office to provide a forensic investigation service. The term of engagement for these forensic investigation services were with consideration of potential litigation with respect to this matter. The forensic investigation engagement report by KPMG is therefore subject to the legal requirements of the solicitor-client privilege. And to expand on that, the APH engaged KPMG to prepare the report and consideration of litigation with respect to the matter. The report is strictly private and confidential and is intended solely to assist Algoma Public Health and its legal counsel in this specific matter and it is not intended for the use for circulation or publication outside the APH and its legal counsel. The Board of Health, in consideration of the city council's motion, immediately emailed city council after its discussion on April fifteenth. On April fifteenth at approximately eleven-thirty in the evening, a report in the form of a letter was emailed to city council via the city clerk. In its spirit of accountability and transparency, the letter also had APH media release attached. The letter reported to council that while KPMG's report in terms of reference are confidential, the APH could report that KPMG's review of selected disbursements did not identify payments that appealed to be unrelated to the APH activities or which resulted in unauthorized personnel benefit to any individual. In addition, KPMG's procedures did not identify instances where it appeared that employee banking information and social insurance numbers were accessed by unauthorized individuals. The letter also reported to the council that the Board and the management of APH are committed to ensure appropriate internal controls and financial oversight. On March eighteenth, the BOH approved a revised procurement policy. In addition, at its upcoming May Board of Health meeting, BOH will be asked to amend its policy to include explicit language to criminal reference checks for services, service providers. This will strengthen already our existing language found in the APH policy. So you're asking why it hasn't been released? Well, first of all, the request for report can be made to the Board of Health. Requests will be forwarded from BOH to the APH legal counsel and legal counsel will contact the KPMG in Sudbury for the release of them. And it's up to KPMG if the report can be published or circulated and it's up to them to determine.
Thank you, Counselor Bruny. Counselor Shoemaker, does that address your question?
Not entirely, Mr. Mayor. And again, I guess I'm directing these questions at the Board of Health generally, you just happen to be the Chair of the Board of Health at times.
I think if you're going to direct the questions, you should be directing them to Algoma Public Health and the Board. To direct them to me, I believe counsel should come to an agreement that the questions should be directed to Algoma Public Health and the Board members. And from there, the Board can return back with your answers.
Maybe, maybe I could speak to that then. Counselor Shoemaker, if you'd cede the floor to me. I would agree with the assessment, Counselor Bruny, that the Board of Health is responsible for the management of Algoma Public Health. From my perspective, this council unanimously passed a motion and that motion was sent to the Board of Public Health. Now, the reality is, this council is in no position to require, demand that the Board of Public Health do anything. But the motion very specifically asked for specific information in response, an actual report back. We received a letter to the Clerk's Office, which I now understand constitutes the report. So it'd be a proper assessment of this body as to whether or not they thought that that report was sufficient to satisfy the motion. In my opinion, I don't think that the report that the council received was sufficient to address the information that we set out in the motion. But I don't think that we can do more tonight than to communicate that to the Board of Public Health. We can do that through you as the Chair and I'm doing that now publicly. In my opinion, as the Mayor, when I read the motion that was sent to the Board of Health, I don't think that the report we got back satisfies the information that we're looking for. But all we can do as a Board is determine whether or not we're satisfied with it. You're quite right that the Board of Public Health has to make a determination on how it wants to proceed. If you think it's the best course of action that the Board of Public Health deals with this and the Board of Public Health would like to hear from counsel, I would be happy to go to the Board of Public Health and attend in person and explain my perspective relative to the motion that was sent and the response we received. I'd be happy to do that if you thought that was helpful. But I do think it's appropriate and within the forum jurisdiction of this group to make a determination on whether or not it was satisfied, the report that it received. I personally, when I reviewed the report in conjunction with the motion, I thought that the report fell short. So that's just simply my perspective. It might not be the perspective of the whole group. But I would be happy to attend before the Board of Public Health because I recognize that you're just one party, you're just one member of it. But you are a council appointee, so it's natural that counsel would ask questions of you when they have questions that relate to the goings-on at the Board. So that's my perspective. So, sure, sure, absolutely.
I believe the invitation has been put out for you to, to come to Algoma Public Health for a tour and I'll follow up tomorrow morning with the executive assistant to see if a time and a date can be, can be reserved for you and probably for any councils that want to attend Algoma Public Health.
Well, that is being arranged. I've met with the senior management of Algoma Public Health.
I know you have.
Yeah, and I will be attending there for a tour. I don't think that's the same thing that I was suggesting. I was suggesting an attendance before the Board of Health. But I don't think that we can do much more here as a council beyond our comments with respect to the information we received in response to the request that was made. Counselor Myers?
I was simply going to suggest that if Counselor Shoemaker wants to put forward a motion tonight, that it should be redirected back to the staff at Algoma Public Health, then it will go to the Board. And in fairness, we should, I agree, I mean, obviously Counselor Bruny is our council-appointed representative there, but in fairness, it should go back through the proper channels. So to your point, if we're not satisfied with this and we want further reporting, there should be a formal, I think, correspondence through our clerk, I would expect, to the CEO at the Board of Health and then it'll go to their Board and go from there. That's just my suggestion.
I understand. I don't think we have a motion before us. Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was where I was headed. I am prepared to move a motion to request the KPMG report from the Board of Health to be provided to counsel.
I'll second it, but it should go through the staff.
Yeah, hold on a second. I think that, there's two different things here, Counselor Shoemaker. You're speaking about the specific report that the KPMG auditors tendered to Algoma Public Health. I think Counselor Bruny, in my understanding of what he said to us, is claiming a litigation privilege over that. So, but let's, what I, what I, what I think is within our jurisdiction is a, an assessment of whether we're satisfied with the information received and a request of Algoma Public Health to provide additional information if we're not satisfied with it. If counsel wants a production of the report along with that, you know, what that might turn into is a legal issue where we receive a response from a solicitor's office that says they can't provide it.
Yes, and, and I'm prepared to receive that response, but I think we do have to request it. I, I'm not at this point aware of any litigation that's happening, so I'm not sure that there's litigation privilege that can be claimed on it. But I would like to, as part of any request from Algoma Public Health's Board, request that KPMG report.
Do we have a seconder for that?
I was willing to second it, but where I'm coming from is we need to fulfill the resolution that this council already passed and I think that's what, that's what this is about.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution was not for the audit to be brought back here.
It was for the report to come back here.
Report, we, a report was provided.
Counselor Bruny, I think when you reviewed the resolution, the resolution, and I made this point this week when I was asked about it, the resolution asks that the Board of Health report back to city council. The resolution does not say, provide an auditor's report back. It sets out a series of information, it sets out three requests of information we'd like and it says, we'd like you to report back to us after you receive the information. And in my opinion, let's, let's separate the auditor's report from the actual report. I'm saying that independent of the auditor's report and receiving the auditor's report, I'm of the opinion that the information we received is deficient relative to what we asked for.
That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
And it includes the auditor's report.
Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just on, on your last point, if we're not going to get the auditor's report and we're not privy to the auditor's report as Counselor Bruny is suggesting, then what other information can we get from APH? Other than they did the report and it says that they didn't really find anything?
Well, I think if you look at the spirit of the mo, if you look at the wording of the motion, we particularly asked for a report back on how it came to be, and I'm paraphrasing, that Mr. Ruttenberg was hired at APH and the process that led to that. We've received no information in that request.
Okay, so we're not really looking for anything that KPMG had, had done in this, in this investigation?
Well, I think Counselor Shoemaker is specifically asking for that. So he's putting a forward a motion for that, it would have to find a seconder for that to go forward.
But are, aren't we, haven't we just been told that we're not going to get that?
We have been.
Okay.
And quite aside for that, what I was suggesting was that, that, that doesn't mean that we cannot get additional information that we request in accord with our original resolution. Counselor Sheen?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a pretty weighty subject to be receiving on an addendum, I just wanted to point that out because whatever we do tonight, I think, you know, we should do as, I'm not sure, no submotion or whatever, I do believe that we do need to receive more information and what does that information look like, what are we missing, but we just basically received, you know, this letter tonight. And one of the, well, for the purposes on this agenda tonight, on the addendum, the one question I have, that was just a point I wanted to make, was this sentence, "The Board is still awaiting the findings of the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care Audit and Assessment." When might that be available and is that a public document as well?
I do not know when that would be available, but I fully expect that would be a public document, although I can't guarantee that, but I don't know why they would have publicized it considering the efforts they, they went through to, to assess it.
I'm on record saying yes, we do want more information. I, I think that perhaps, I'm just thinking aloud, is that in two weeks' time, if someone would want to propose resolutions, look at the report, look at what we asked for and then put forward the resolution at that time in light of that. Those are my comments.
Counselor Shoemaker, you had your hand up?
I was just going to remark on your statements, which is that, you know, we're being told that only the Board of Health can provide us information through a formal request to them. But at the same time, we're being told by Counselor Bruny that he's not going to provide the report without first getting the authorization from the Board of Health, so I think we should request it of the Board of Health and hear it from the Board of Health instead of from Counselor Bruny himself, who has admittedly stated that he is not speaking, you know, for the collective group.
Okay, well, you, you still don't have a seconder for your, for your motion, Counselor Shoemaker, so I'm going to make that determination. If you don't get a seconder for that motion, then that matter will be at, at an end and then we'll just deal with the matter about the sufficiency of the report that we did receive. So do we, Counselor Shoemaker is moving to formally request the auditor's report done by KPMG from the Board of Health. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Seeing none, Counselor Shoemaker, your motion would obviously fail.
Thank you.
I'm, Counselor Butland?
Yes, I'm not sure where we're going and why we're going there. There's been a KPMG audit and we received a letter in and around that and there is a provincial forensic audit. Why would we not wait for the results of that? That we jump into the fray, for what purpose? And my issue is, there's a human element here that we're just ignoring completely. And I think we're putting a colleague of ours under extensive scrutiny, and I know he's not going to like this, media attention, our attention, were piling on. And sure, quite conceivably, there have been mistakes in governance and some decisions that they may regret and as Chair, you have to take some responsibility. But his question, his integrity has been questioned over a month ago and I bit my tongue then and I shouldn't have. It is not acceptable to put a representative of us and besiege him with this kind of beyond the pale, if you will. And the undue pressure that is brought upon him, you say, well, he's the Chair, he's got to answer to it. But even when he answers, you say, well, that's not good enough. There are, there are other sides to this story that haven't been told. And the media, God bless them, you have to be friends with the media in this business, but there is another side to the story that should be told. I think enough already. Why can we not wait for the provincial audit to come forward? And whether they release that or not, they will have the reasons and I, I guess one would hope that it would, would be public. But I just feel when you, and maybe you're not, maybe those aren't your motives at all, but it, the perception is, you're at fault, pal. You're the Chair of the Board and you're responsible for all of this. Well, to a certain extent, he is, but to question his integrity, I do not accept. He handles his position as a counselor exceedingly well. And I would hope, rather than doing what we're doing, they say, you got my vote of confidence whether you want it or not.
Thank you. Counselor Christian? Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't have, I don't have anything prepared, but I, I do agree with my ward mate. There are issues. We, we are elected officials and we take the responsibility of doing our jobs to the best of our abilities, and yes, things could be changed, and, you know, I think if, if Counselor Brunie had his choices, perhaps, I'm speaking for him and perhaps I shouldn't, perhaps things would have been done a little bit differently, but I also have to think that internally, there were processes in place that, that, that were inherited as well, so it's not like these things were created, they existed. I, I do believe that we should, this is a delicate issue, and I, I understand where Counsel Shoemaker's coming from in terms of wanting answers, we all, we all want that, and, and I know Counsel Brunie is, is doing his best to provide, but I do think it would be a good idea to wait for the other audit, if it's been called for and we're waiting on results. Nothing's going to change what's occurred, and I think we would be, our questions would be better directed and better served if, if we had, if we waited for that other report. So, like I say, I didn't have anything planned, but this isn't about integrity, there, there are some issues to, to deal with, and I just hope that we'll wait for the, the provincial report.
Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've said quite some time ago that I was on that board for four years, and Counsel Brunie, God bless him, was the one that picked it up when I went off of it, and the issue at hand for me right now is simply fulfillment of the resolution that we already asked for, and I do not think it should be directed across this table tonight as fellow counsel, I think it needs to go back through the process, I think we've said that earlier. I also agree with my ward mate, I think it can wait for another two weeks, but I think that we need to just formally go back, and I think that's where you're gonna go next, Mr. Mayor, is if we are not satisfied that this letter, which happens to have the name of the Board Chair on it, which happens to also be a fellow counselor, setting that aside, I think we need to go back through the staff and, and let the staff deal with it at Algonville Public Health and probably take it to their Board, but the point being, I just wanna see the fulfillment of our resolution, we have no jurisdiction over the Ministry of Health, Long-Term Care, this is our jurisdiction, and we need to deal with it as a council. Thank you.
The city solicitor, did you have comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a suggestion that might bounce this out of the political arena and down to the staff level, which might avoid any awkwardness of counselors pitting against counselors, and my suggestion was if, if council saw a fit to direct staff to request under the Freedom of Information Act, Counsel Shoemaker's, the report that he suggested, or something greater than that, and if privilege is put forward as an exemption, there's an appeal route to that, so it's, it's in a completely different forum, and it's adjudged by the Information and Privacy Commissioner of Ontario, so it's just a, an alternate route.
You'd have to have a counselor that would put that forward as a, a motion, city solicitor. I haven't, don't see any uptake on that. I'd, I'd like to comment on Counsel Butland's comments, and then I think we can wrap this matter up, as, as I suggested here. In my mind, this isn't about anybody's integrity, and it's not about putting anybody in the spot. This body passed a motion. That motion had very specific enumeration in it, and it was passed, as I recall, unanimously. I don't think that the information we received satisfies the information that was requested. And my point tonight was going to be to communicate that to Counsel Brunie on behalf of the Board of Health. Counsel Brunie is just one member of the Board of Health, and he makes, they make decisions as a group of people, so they decided to respond to the letter the way they decided, and not Counsel Brunie in his own capacity. I recognize that. So, I don't see this as an inadequacy on Counsel Brunie's part, I see it as inadequacy, in my mind, on the Board of Health's part. So, all we can do, in my opinion, is ask that our, the information we requested be provided. I don't think we can go any further than that. And I'd like to make it clear to the Board of Health, speaking right now publicly, not just to Counsel Brunie, that I don't think they provided the information that we requested in satisfaction of our report, and I'd be happy to visit the Board of Health and make those representations in person. So, I'm happy to leave the matter at that, because I am of the same mind as Counsel Christian, and I think in Counsel Sheen, whereas we're going to be getting additional information in any event soon. But this is an important body, and it represents all of the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie, and we passed a motion on their behalf, and in my mind, we didn't get the information we were looking for. And we can leave it at that, and I can take the matter up properly with the entire Board and not just Counsel Brunie, if that satisfies the group. So, with that, Mr. Clerk, we can proceed.
Are there any other items under the consent agenda, counsel?
We have Counsel Myers and then Counsel Christian. Sorry, I apologize, Counsel Butland. Counsel Myers?
Yep, I'm just getting back to-
Counsel Butland, can I call you up for, just a relief, I've got a-
Okay, I've got a few of them, starting with 6.1.1, the Brian Gallagher story, your And this, I'm not quite sure who this should be directed towards, whether it would be our Commissioner of Finance, but item 6.7 on our agenda is property tax appeals, and I was wondering why this one wouldn't fall into that process, or maybe it's legal, I don't know, it says Section 357 of the Municipal Act is what, 6.7, dealing with property tax appeals is about. Is this a different thing? They're looking for a rebate due to vacancy. Can someone explain to me why that wouldn't just fall under that?
I believe it, Mr. Freiburger?
Yes, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Myers, this is a different situation. This is a case where in 6.1.1, Mr. Gallagher is, is questioning about a vacancy rebate. The other report is tax write-offs that have been recommended to councils, so one is just a taxpayer asking to look at his situation, and the other one is our normal report for tax write-offs.
So, that, it's a bit of a misnomer to say that they're property tax appeals, the other one in 6.7, 'cause that, it says property tax appeals. Property tax appeals is the name of item 6.7, and I sort of interpreted as 6.1.1 as a, he's asking for, he's appealing, he's making an appeal based on vacancy argument.
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Myers, the, the, our property tax report is when an appeal has come in, has been processed. The other one is from a taxpayer that is, is questioning the process and questioning why he doesn't qualify for rebate, so it's, it's really two separate issues.
Okay, so does, does, other than him sending this letter to us that's on our agenda, does he have an appeal process to go through?
No. Yes, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Myers, yes, he can appeal to the Assessment Review Board.
And he, and he's doing that, he says in the letter, he's already made the appeal through impact, so it has to go back through the impact process.
Right.
Okay, got it, thank you. I've got a couple more.
Proceed.
I don't know if anybody else was on that item, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Oh, sorry, on the same one? Counsel Sheen?
Yeah, on the same one, six-
One, one?
Yep, Brian Gallagher story, your stuff. The timelines for the review, it mentions that there was gonna be a review of the request. When do we expect to have that back or completed, Mr. Acting Mayor, to our Commissioner of Finance?
Mr. Count, Mr. Mayor to Counsel Sheen, I would expect, we try in the next two weeks to come back to, with a short report to council.
Thank you.
Next one, Counsel Myers?
6.4, the 2015 capital from current budget. This was, I think, finding the $100,000 that was required in the budget to, to get us through the budget process. Can, and I don't know whether this would be through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to our Commissioner of Finance, but I, I, I think actually it maybe needs to get to Public Works, because I wanted to ask, the recommendation is taking the $100,000 from the traffic control software item. I also see an item called demolition of the pipe plant building at 90,000, and I guess I wanted to understand, before we approve this recommendation, as to what is it that the traffic control software would do? Because we've had a number of issues around management of traffic, and we've been asking our traffic manager to do various things at various intersections, so I wanna understand how this item, traffic control software, would set us back, because I think we're not suggesting it be put off till next year, versus a demolition of a building that might be a similar cost center. Thank you.
I suspect Mr. Girardi can start this one.
Through, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, the traffic control, control software is the direction that we're heading, with this software, software will do, will allow us to know what's going on at the intersection. We were more, it's something that we can put off, what we were hoping to get, and we did get, was the uninterrupted power supply, so as you know, when we have a storm, the battery backup systems will keep the lights flashing, so that was more important to us. As far as the pipe plant's concerned, we need to take it down, it's unsafe.
Okay.
It's abandoned, it's on our property, and it's been sitting there, and like other abandoned buildings throughout the city, we, it's right in the middle of our lot, so we're really anxious to take that down.
Okay.
So, taking away the software for one year is fine.
Okay, that's not gonna impact some of our traffic management issues that council have brought forward? Okay, thank you.
The most important one, I think, as you recall, was the uninterrupted power supply, so that is one that certainly we're happy to do.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The next one?
Yes.
If anyone had, was anyone else on that? No. Okay, would be 6.13, reconstruction of McMecon and Elizabeth. This is probably through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to our Director of Engineering.
Mr. Elliott, I think.
Mr. Elliott, and I can piggyback that with the other one on Upton Road, if you'd like as well, but can we make an effort to use some of the recycled asphalt to layer over the remaining portion of McMecon, comes around to Hevenner from Elizabeth? I drove it again today, and I know that what this is about is, is reconstructing, a complete reconstruction between Elizabeth Street and Churchill Boulevard on McMecon, which I agree needs to be done, but as I look at the rest of McMecon over to Hevenner, which is around behind Queen Elizabeth School, it's a brutal, brutal area, just in terms of the condition of the asphalt, I understand it's not the reconstruction underground, but can we, can we please earmark this somewhere, so that, so that whole area will look consistent when it's done, even though some of it's just a resurface? Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Mr. Elliott?
Mr. Acting Mayor to Counselor Myers, roads that are failed that miserably aren't really candidates for resurfacing. I know sometimes Public Works does some, some padding or some patching with hot mixed asphalt, but no, we wouldn't recommend, there's, there isn't really a way to take asphalt excavated from one portion of the road and try to put it on, on another.
Okay, I guess I'm harkening back to, and, and really, the Commissioner of Public Works will probably recall this, this happened with Kohler Avenue. We, Kohler, the, the fall prior to the next spring season, when Kohler was fully reconstructed, a good top third of that street was done with a lovely new layer that just totally was amazing, and I guess that's kinda where I was going here, and I don't know what the right words are, maybe I'm not using the right words, I think there was a term that you used for that, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to the Commissioner of Public Works I'm looking at, that I may be mis, mis, misstepping this or not saying it properly to the Director of Engineering, can you help me interpret? What am I trying to say?
Through, through Acting Mayor to Counselor Myers, we put a shim coat on top of that area, just to buy time.
Right.
That was done at that area. I'm not really familiar with this project at all, so I couldn't say whether or not, you know, we'll be able to do to help you out.
Thank you. Sure, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, I think I'd just like to leave it flagged, if there's any possible way, when you have this beautiful, brand-newly reconstruction section, that the balance of just that around the curve from the back of the school, if there's anything that can be done to smooth it out, I'd just like to park that idea with our engineering. Thank you. I don't know if Don's making faces at me, but-
Yes, he is.
Okay, and then 6.18 is reconstruction of Upton Road, which would be directed to him as well, if you want me to move on with that one. Shall I?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Elliott, the reconstruction of Upton Road, and you and I have corresponded on this, so this is not coming as any surprise to you. The issue came up during the open house sessions regarding access during construction for wheelchair residents, we have a, two situations in particular where one, one's a 25-year-old young man who is completely wheelchair-bound, so there were concerns that we had had around how to, throughout the construction, this is a complete reconstruction of Upton Road, Lower Upton, there'd been discussion around possibly creating a temporary access behind, um, between Victoria Avenue and Edward Lane, behind the homes. Can you just comment on the status of that and whether that's something that'll be kept on the radar?
Mr. Mayor to Counsel Myers, yes, we are considering that, now that we have a contractor, or if you award this contract tonight, we have a contractor to work with, between our contractor, our consultant, on our own staff, they will likely meet in the field, probably with the family, and determine what the best approach would be. It may be, given the configuration of the front yard and the driveway, that there's something we can do at the front that, that can provide the access for the period of time that, that the trench is right in front of that home. There's other fairly long stretches of the construction project where they will have full access, so we're gonna work directly with them and determine what to do.
Thank you, and, and you've been very good, and Carl Romeo has also been excellent with the residents there, and I just wanna thank you for that, and, and they thank you, as you know, with that correspondence. My last one, Mr. Mayor?
Go.
Our acting mayor's been replaced. I just wanna make a comment around item 614, and it's a CV, CTV sponsorship agreement. I just wanted to make the comment that this is a really good leverage of the spend and really good exposure, and just wanted to thank CTV for supporting this, I, I know the Acting Mayor would have been happy about it. The Environmental Initiatives Coordinator wrote the report, and it's around exposure around our 20-minute makeover, and just wanted to thank CTV for their support on that one, Mr. Mayor. That's it for me.
Thank you, Counsel Butland.
Um, I was waiting to the very end, 611, the vacancy review policy that I had put on the council agenda, and I'm sure it's an oversight that nobody has made any comment. Last meeting, there was considerable discussion around this, and Mr. Fertizi admitted that, well, he said he didn't, didn't think there was a written policy, but he had been implementing the policy, and that turned out to, to be true. So, we have a resolution indicating that we should be developing a vacancy review policy. There is one in place, so maybe we would need to amend it, but not construct a brand-new policy. So, we've been through CAO and Mr. Nero and Mr. Luska before him, and I can remember full well, reducing staff by using this very policy. So, for those who are suggesting that we need to construct a new one, please take a look at the old one, and maybe it needs to be amended. So, I bring it to your attention.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Seeing nothing else on the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk, we can proceed.
I have a motion by Counselors Nero and Hoopanen, resolved that all the items listed under date 2015-04-27, Part 1 Consent Agenda and the Addendum be approved as recommended, save and accept 6.9 and 6.21.
All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can proceed into Section 8 now, 8.1. It's a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Myers. Whereas Sault Ste. Marie City Council recently passed the 2015 municipal budget, and whereas council elected to utilize approximately $2 million of surplus money in redundant reserve funds as revenue to decrease the tax levy, and whereas these actions, when combined with expected decreases in provincial grant formulas, will likely result in a $3 million gap facing the city of Sault Ste. Marie when it begins preparations for the 2016 budget, and whereas council is aware of the need to decrease this gap as much as possible in order to minimize tax increases in 2016 and future years, and whereas it is understood that the whole of council must exercise leadership and must take responsibility for providing direction to staff in order to accomplish the aforementioned objective, now therefore be it resolved that a subcommittee of coun- a subcommittee of council be struck with the mayor and two counselors as voting members and with the following staff as resources, the interim CEO, the Commissioner of Finance and Treasure, and the manager of audits and capital planning. And that said, subcommittee, by evaluating the city budgeting process and the past experiences of comparable municipalities, shall identify appropriate methods by which a council-led spending review of city operations and grants to outside agencies could be undertaken and report back to council with findings and recommendations.
I'll speak to this briefly before Counselor Myers or Counselor Shoemaker. I'm largely responsible for the motion. You know, it occurred to me after our budget meeting, which was, as we're all aware, my first budget meeting, that we have a corporation with a $185 million budget, and we spend about four or five hours talking about what $752,000 of, $2 million of spending. So our budget nights largely consist of a very small amount of our budget. And it seems to me, we know now, that we could expect a $3 million gap next year or some kind of substantial gap. And if we start that conversation at the same time next year as we did this year, we're going to be having some very similar conversations on budget night when we're talking about $15,000. I agree with the propositions that a lot of this is tinkering around the edges. And I very firmly believe that we have to get a better sense as a council on what we can do to bring down the city's spending. We know that our assessment growth is down. We know that we have an aged population. We know that we have a lot more people in our population that are on fixed incomes. So I think we have responsibility to do it. This, to be very clear, isn't a subgroup that's going to go and assess the spending. This is a subgroup that's going to go and figure out some processes and models that we could use as a larger group. Everything that we would move forward on would have to be approved by this group. This group would have to endorse any procedural plan. This group would be part of any spending review. This is a smaller group, just to go away and look at different ways that we could do this. Counselor Fatta had raised the issue a number of times of outside spending. You know, it's hard to raise that issue in the process of budgeting when, you know, you're a quarter through the year. So this can look at that. This can look at what we give to outside agencies and where we might have some room, where we might be able to find some savings. But this is a subgroup to get together, to develop a process that we can bring back to the larger group to help us drill down and take a good look at the city's spending. And that's the spirit within which this motion's offered. Counselor Shoemaker, Myers, would you like to speak to it as the Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly echo your comments, and it was my first budget as well. And, you know, I felt like I was involved to an extent in the budgeting process, but I think it's something that I'd like to be more involved in and get a little deeper into the numbers. Like you said, it didn't seem like much when we were discussing $1 million of a $183 million, $186 million budget. So I think reviewing the spending that our city has in a greater sense is something that hopefully can help us from our starting position next year, which, as is noted, is probably in the $2, $3 million range deficit in essence.
Counselor Myers.
I actually have a question that I thought about after we had prepared this resolution. So in our MOUs with the Innovation Center and the EDC, we're obligated to give them one year's notice. And everyone knows that was an issue for me, that we don't have that same courtesy with the other agencies. So should we not be taking that step right now, not to say that we're going to touch their funding, but that we should be doing that now so that we're under that MOU one year notification period? I don't want us to get down this road and then find that we are, in fact, going to look at our outside agencies, including the two major, two of the major ones, not the two major, but... So I'd like to just, I'm wondering if there's something we need to do in tandem with this around a notification now.
I would suggest that if this motion fails, that would be moot. So if this committee isn't struck, then there would be no process at all.
And the MOUs with those two specific, they have to be given one year notice? In writing, I think.
Sure, but I think that's a separate issue, Counsel Myers.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll bring it back at the next meeting, or we should maybe be drafting something. It's not complicated. I guess we should draft something tonight, maybe. I guess I'm thinking in light of this, because that's part of what we're going to be doing, is looking at those two agencies that, in fact, right now, we cannot look at them under our own term. We'll proceed with this, yeah.
Counsel Butland.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I guess I may as well alienate everybody that I haven't already alienated. I support this conditional. What you have put forward is a top-down process, and there is every suggestion that we will be a $3 million gap next year, and that is an assumption. And that was the assumption last year and the year before, I should tell you. And the Oomph Grant is probably going to go up next year. And the uploading gives us more revenue. So the surplus is always a known creature. So we're starting off saying, well, we've got a $3 million gap. We're not sure about that. But where this, I think, misses the mark, three people only are going to vote on what we're going to do with the spending review, with some help from the financial department. Should we not be inclusive? Should we not be including staff and have discussions with them? And sit down with them and say, hey, you know where we're going? Put it before them and say, you know, we want to have a spending review, but nobody knows better than perhaps where we can achieve some efficiencies than staff. Include them. They may not be totally comfortable with where we're going, but at least they're not completely on the outside. And nobody knows better the operations of the city than the people on the ground every single day. So as I say, well, is this about the budget process, or is it about cutting staff or cutting service or whatever? So if it's spending, that is indeed what it is. In order to curtail spending, we have to become more efficient. Or we have to cut staff, and when we cut staff, we have to cut services. My experience in this past winter, they didn't want less service. They said, my snowbank's on Dacey and Boundary and so on and so forth. What's not? I pay taxes. I want this removed. People want more. They don't want less. I think we have to attempt, attempt, to build some consensus with our staff. Try to gain their confidence. And I think they'd be pleased, at the very least, that you reached out to them and say, hey, let's sit down, let's have a, let's have a roundtable discussion. It may be a big roundtable, but let's do 20, 25 at a time. I'm sure they have some ideas. And assure them, we're not out to purge the workforce. I'm told that every year, 10 to 20 people retire. So if that's the way we had to go, maybe attrition would be the way to go. It would be less, I think, confrontational. Do you want buy-in? Or does it matter, I guess? That's probably it. I'm hoping that I will support this, but I'm hoping you'll say, okay, yeah, we're prepared to reach out to staff and talk with them and make this an inclusive exercise rather than an exclusive exercise.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You know, Counsel Butland, that the body of the motion includes the interim CEO, the Commissioner of Finance, and the manager of audits as committee members. It was an original suggestion when this motion was drafted that the staff would be voting members of the committee, but after some discussions with the clerk, he suggested that the counselors be the voting members. But I assure you that I have the utmost respect for the staff of this corporation, and they would be included in all of the discussions. So this is a matter of, we included the head of finance, and we included the manager of audits and capital planning, and the interim CEO, so that we can get that staff feedback. And if along the way, we should have commissioners also give us input, this is about designing a process to review things. That's simply what it's about, designing a process to review things. It's not about purging, and it's not about any of the other things you've suggested in your speech. It's about designing a process to review things, and we'll review things as a group. And after we review things, there's nothing precluding this body, after its review, from determining that everything is great and that nothing has to be done. It'll be this body that determines that, and as it should be. Counsel Bruny, you had your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm reading this, and I'm saying, wouldn't this be the finance committee? I mean, are we going to have two groups that are going to be overlapping each other? It's basically the same people that are on the finance committee, so why wouldn't it be a finance committee?
Well, I think my...
Mandate.
Sure. I mean, if you want to change the mandate to the finance committee, this, the finance committee came here once, the finance committee came to this body with a motion prior to budget, asking this body for the authority to prioritize a small list of spending items. And this body didn't give the finance committee that authority. So this is specifically to design a process to do a spending review. These three people, along with these staff, will not be doing this spending review. They're just going to develop a process by which to do a spending review. Maybe that this group recommends, after consulting with staff, that the finance committee be given a broader mandate and be used. This group would just simply canvass different ways to appropriately do a spending review in conjunction with staff.
Counsel Sheehan.
Just thank you very much. I, in reading the resolution, you know, my first thoughts were back to many budgets that, many of my comments are the same, that budget doesn't happen that evening. Budget happens year-round. It's every time council makes a decision. I like this because it goes even deeper. It kind of talks about, not only from meeting to meeting, but sort of daily and what kind of activities are happening. But that's what they're going to report on. That's not what this group is going to get into, and that's why I support this. It simply says, and I read it, "will evaluate the city budgeting process and past experiences of comparable municipalities, shall identify appropriate methods by which a council-led spending review of city operations and grants to outside agencies could be undertaken, and report back to council with finding and recommendations." And then ultimately, it's council's decision on which way they wish to proceed. So this little group goes away and does some homework and comes back with some findings. So I'm in favor of it as it stands, and I have no problem with it, and I look forward to seeing the research and the findings.
Do we have any other questions or comments in the motion? Counselor Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been listening tonight to everybody trying to come up with ways of cutting spending and doing this and maneuvering that and cutting money from the agencies. Why can't we come up with an idea where we can generate new revenue? My mind, the way I'm thinking is development charges is something that we have been missing out on for years. I know it's probably a touchy subject, but I've been looking at it, and I just, I just think that we're missing out. There are over 200 municipalities that charge development charges. We aren't one of them. There are three that don't. There's us, and there's Thunder Bay, and there's North Bay, I believe, and maybe Timmins. I just think we're missing out. For example, there's a huge subdivision that just went up by the hospital. If development charges were implemented, we could have made over $400,000. I just, am I not seeing something? Or I just don't...
That matter will be before us.
Yes, I understand that, yes, but I just, I just want everybody to know that I, I just really think we're missing out on it. I don't know why we're trying to figure out how to cut what we've got. Why don't we try to make more if we can? And it's, you know...
That'd be great, too.
I think, thank you.
So are there any other comments or questions in the motion? Counsel Fatta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I think, just to be clear, we mentioned the finance committee. Did that go anywhere? Were we entertaining that possibility, or are we still looking at this in isolation from the finance?
This is the motion that's before us.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not thinking in terms of the finance committee being involved in this or not. I certainly feel like I would want to be part of this committee, and I'm hoping that there'll be at least two or three counselors. I've been accused of times being like a bottleneck china shop, so like, my points of view tend to be more, more direct, more blunt and with less finesse and maybe less creativity. Just to point to Counsel Hoopanen, I mean, that, some people might look at that and say that that's a very good point, but I might say the opposite. If we have an incentive for people to develop here, whether it be multi-residential or whatever, that could be something that we might be going down the wrong road. So it's, to say that that's a simple, a simple solution, I wouldn't necessarily agree, but that's part of the discussion that we would have. We got fortunate this year, and I don't know how many other people on this council realize this, but that surplus that we had this year, I don't think anybody expected that. And that wasn't really surplus money. That was just, that was just accounts receivable. That was money's owed to, owed to the corporation. It wasn't really surplus money that was suddenly found that we charged taxpayers more than we were supposed to. I think the fact that we're looking at outside agencies is something that has to be addressed. I think some people have this notion that some things are untouchable, and again, that's something that we can't look at this, this way. There's many factors that are out there that where people's lives do change, and they have to adjust. But we seem to continue thinking that certain, certain areas are untouchable. And I think that the EDC, the Innovation Center, and these other outside agencies, Library and so forth, have to be looked at seriously. And just an example, for the outside agencies, even at 10%, we're looking at about $1 million that we would save. That's, that's a million dollars that we will need next year. It's not something that we should entertain and say, well, maybe we should, maybe we'll look at it for a while and then decide not to. Certain agencies, and they are all there on the public dime, they should be able to be creative and come up with ideas. And that's part of, I think, to Counsel Hoopanen's point, they are the ones that have to be creative. We have to ask them to be creative, but we seem to think that they're untouchable. So during this process, we're going to have to ask people to step up and realize that things just don't, the status quo just won't work. Next year, there won't be a surplus. I can, I can probably quote what Commissioner Feiburger is probably thinking and saying that next year, there's going to be very little surplus, if any. But we're not going to have that, that, that item to hang our hats on. This year, we came up with 1.89, and suddenly we look like we are geniuses. We were lucky.
I don't, I don't think we ever looked like we were geniuses, Counsel Fatta.
Well, I mean, I don't, I didn't take any credit for that 1.89 from anybody, because that wasn't my, that wasn't my creation.
Sure.
3.5 million suddenly, suddenly appeared from nowhere. It was like it fell from, fell from heaven.
Is it fair to say, Counsel Fatta, that you're in favor of the spending resolution?
That is very fair to say that, but I think that we have to make sure that that includes the EDC and the Innovation Center, because that, those departments have continued to...
Counsel Fatta, again, this group would go away and come back with some suggestions for council at large, including what would be examined. Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there's nothing wrong with, in my opinion, looking at opportunities. It's called best practices. You look at, you try to find different ways of looking at things. I get that, and I agree with Counsel Butland, though I think you do, it needs to be inclusive. If we're going to go through this exercise, it might as well be meaningful. And I agree with Counsel Hoopanen as well. I mean, it's, if you're running a business, you're looking at revenues and you're looking at costs. If we're going to, if we're going to characterize ourselves as a business per se, then we have to look at revenue streams as well. To Counsel Fatta's point, it doesn't, I know what he's trying to say in terms of charging these development fees, that it would, it would seem that it's counterintuitive, that it's disincentive, but you have to look at the entire industry, if we're in an industry. And the fact is that other municipalities charge it, and if we don't, we're just throwing away money. So I think we need to include it. And I really don't like the term untouchable, because if we're going to go down that route, we better start talking about our own remuneration. So, you know, it's easy to point fingers at people and say, they've got to be willing to take a cut. There's 12 of, 13 of us in this room that would have to say the same thing. So let's just be careful about how we position these, these other organizations, because you can't, you can't say that they're untouchable and then keep taking remuneration for what we do. If you want to cut, and you want everybody to cut, then you have to include yourself.
Can we have a vote on the motion? Any additional comments? All in favor?
Under Agenda Item...
No, we can, sorry, opposed? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 8.2, 4 Leaning Highway 17... Under Agenda Item 8.2, 4-laneing Highway 17. This has been a notice of motion at our previous meeting, a motion by Counselors Sheehan and Myers. Whereas Sault Ste. Marie MPP David Orazetti has been championing the creation of four lanes, twinning of the Trans-Canada Highway in Ontario. And whereas the 1949 agreement between the federal and provincial governments called on an equal funding partnership between the two levels of government to develop a national link through the province. And whereas a four-lane highway has a number of advantages, including but not limited to increased safety and economic advantages. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council request that the federal government enter into an agreement with the provincial government with the aim of creating four lanes, twinning of the Trans-Canada Highway in Ontario. And further, that City Council request the assistance of MPP David Orazetti, MP Brian Hayes, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, the Algoa District Municipal Association, and any other group or individual in achieving this goal.
Counselor Sheehan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This came about, when a few of us had attended the Chamber of Commerce breakfast that they hosted, MPP and Cabinet Minister David Orazetti. And as he was speaking, he was talking about this initiative that he had undertook, which was defeated back in 2011. And so that kinda tweaked the, the idea, and the approach that he had taken was, he'd approached the federal government, you know, basically asking them to go halvesies on 4-laning the, the highway in Ontario, much of which Highway 17 runs through northern Ontario, so between Manitoba and Quebec. You know, he quotes an agreement from 1949, when the federal government had approached all the provinces and said they'd do 50/50. So, you know, having thought about that, and just all the stats that are out there, and I think probably that I had just recently been on the highway. I went down to go accept the Platinum Award down, calling it, so had driven 17, and pretty, pretty bad weather. And then you hear about all the accidents that happened afterwards, and it's really kinda hit home, and I thought, you know, there's, there's something that we, we should be done, that, you know, sometimes we just say, well, it hasn't happened, so it's not gonna happen. Well, I don't take that approach. I say, you know, take a look at what the ACR rail, I mean, it was dead in the water, until the people kind of got motivated, and there was a big movement afoot, a lobby effort from the city, the, the neighboring cities, the communities, and the people. And then it got back on the table, and it happened. So I'm saying is that there is a possibility, and I think a, an opportunity, because the 4 lane is important for all the reasons. And I just have a, just a couple of quick stats for about the safety concerns. In, again, you gotta, this is 2011. 2011, an annual average of 31 fatalities and 1,012 injuries occur on Highway 17 as a result of collisions and other accidents. You know, a 4-lane highway would significantly decrease that. The 4 lane in northern Ontario, well, that is some of the smallest percentages of 4-laning across 17, which only accounts for about 14% of the entire way. So in other jurisdictions, there are many, many more 4-laning and twinning happening. I just think that's unfair for us in northern Ontario, that all of the regions across Canada have more 4-laning than us. So I think it's a good thing. I think, Mr. Mayor, through, perhaps in the past, through the Mayor's office, if we could write a letter to AMO, and AMO could distribute to their members, Phenom, and local MP and MPP, and this letter could ask, you know, the communities to contact their MPPs and MPs, asking them just to sit down and get going by signing an agreement that they'll work together. Don't expect a 4 lane overnight, but we at least need some kind of action on sitting down, signing an agreement, and getting going. And if we could just do a few kilometers per year, we'd at least get something done and get it started. And, you know, it hasn't escaped me either that developments that are on the horizon for northern Ontario, Port of Algoa is gonna put a significant amount of trucks on the highway, as well as the Ring of Fire is gonna put another amount of trucks on there as well. And it's gonna be a huge, like, just the amount of truck traffic on 17 in northern Ontario is 1,046 trucks travel every day on 17 in northern Ontario, with a peak period of 2,600 per day. It was expected to go up by 70% in 2026, and with these new announcements, that number will increase even more. So it is an important initiative, and I think that if we can, you know, go through your office, Mr. Mayor, have a, a letter crafted and sent out to AMO, who will distribute to us and to any other organization that you can think of. As well, we will be attending AMO in the summer, a few of us, and I think there's an opportunity also to lobby for that.
If this council sees fit to pass your motion, Counselor Sheehan, I would certainly do anything I could to, to move this council's will forward. Counselor Fatah?
I will certainly vote for this, because it won't cost us anything.
Hmm?
And I can also say privately that we won't see this thing to go through by, by at least 2,500 AD. Why is it that we're asking for the moon here, when we haven't even got this 1.1 kilometer that joins second line in Black Road to the, to the so-called bypass? Why are we talking about climbing Mount Everest, when we had, we can't even climb a small knoll that would be 1.1 kilometers to fix, to extend the second line?
I understood you to say you supported the motion, Counselor Fatah.
Why?
I don't have an answer to that, Counselor Fatah.
This is ridiculous, but I mean, yeah.
But it's ridiculous, but you'll support it. It's Counselor Sheehan's motion, so I'll let him answer your question.
On that comment, shoot for the stars and hope you hit the moon. But-
How about 1.1 kilometers?
But this is across, this is an issue across Ontario. We have only 14% of 4-lane highway across Ontario. That's not fair. And this is for, for that reason, for your reason, that, you know, I think all those on the corridor in 17, including eastern Ontario and northwestern Ontario, and Ontario for that matter, because someone pointed out to me that many Ontarians use this particular highway. So I think if Ontario shows up, stands up, and noting it is an election year, we might get some movement as well, because this is probably an appropriate time to, to lobby.
So seeing no other comments on this, we'll call a vote on Counselor Sheehan's motion. All in favor? None opposed? Carried.
This brings us to Item 11, the bylaws. We have dealt with a couple of them already. The rest can be moved by a motion by Councillors Turco and Shoemaker. Resolve that all bylaws listed under Item 11 of the agenda, under date 2015-0427, be approved. Save and accept 2015-72 and 2015-86.
All in favor? No, sorry. Counselor Shoemaker?
2015-75, I believe, I was in conflict on as well, your, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll separate that one out from that motion?
Yes, please.
So we're not voting on that one, so are you prepared to proceed? Counselor Clerk, District Clerk, so all in favor? Carried. And now we would just be voting on the bylaw that Counselor Shoemaker's conflicted on, which is-
2015-75?
That's correct.
Okay.
All, all in favor? Counselor Shoemaker did not vote on that. Yeah, I'm getting there, Terry. So carried. Are we on unfinished business now, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we are.
So we're on unfinished business, and before Commissioner Freiburger packs his stuff up there, I thought it appropriate that we give CEO Fortezy an opportunity to speak, and also Commissioner Freiburger, if he wanted one, before we do that. We've, we've talked a lot about CEO Fortezy's retirement, and we want to kind of not lose sight of the fact that Commissioner Freiburger is also retiring. This is the last meeting for both men. Both men have been at this corporation for a very long time, and on behalf of the city and City Council and the Mayor's office, we appreciate the service and your efforts, and we wish you both a happy and enjoyable retirement, with much time with your respective families, and we hope you're blessed with a very long retirement. So Commissioner Freiburger, before we pass the floor to CEO Fortezy, would you like to say anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just, I feel honored to have had the opportunity to work for the city for 30 years, and been the Treasurer, the Commissioner of Finance and Treasurer for the last 21 years. I've had the honor of working with the, with six mayors and with eight councils, and I've estimated that I've attended approximately 500 council meetings. And I'd just like to say, it's just been, I'm proud of having worked with a team of City Council and City Staff, that we've accomplished many major infrastructure projects, like the SR Centre and many others. And I just wanna say, I wanna thank City Council and City Staff for all their support and assistance through the years. So thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before I say anything on my own, I wanna say a few words about Bill, because Bill has been an important part of this organization for a long, long time. As he's pointed out, he's been our Commissioner of Finance for 21 years, he's been with our organization for 30. And it was at our budget meeting last week that Counselor Butlin pointed out, and I'm gonna point out again, because it's, it's largely due to Bill's involvement that our city is, is in good shape as, as it is, as we leave this organization. Our infrastructure's good, our debt load is low, our services are at the high end, our taxes are amongst the lowest for cities our size, not only in northern Ontario, but all over Ontario for the average homeowner. Our asset management plan is in place, and it's financed, our reserves are healthy, our credit rating is good, and as is pointed out by our bond raters, overall, our future outlook is positive. And I think if any commissioner can leave an organization with those types of comments and those types of checks, checkmarks in place, it's because of very hard work, good work done. And I, I know I speak on behalf of all of the senior management team. Bill has had our back, you know, over the, the 19 years that I've been the, the CAO, and over the period of time that commissioners have been heading up their departments. So to you, Bill, thank you so much for what you've given to our organization. On behalf of staff, council has already made their comments, but this community is much better and certainly is left in much better shape as a result of your involvement, and for that, I'm very grateful. With respect to my own comments, you probably will have seen how difficult, last week I had a chair that wouldn't let me sit comfortably. Today, I just wasn't comfortable. This is my last meeting. Bill talked about 500. I, I think, going back to the early days when we met much more often, I think I can probably get past 2,000 meetings, council meetings. If I look happy, it's because I am. I, I think you probably, if you were looking this way, you would've seen me looking at the body language, and maybe even not hiding well, my facial expressions. It's hard to sit here, especially when there's a last meeting, and not get involved in the discussion, in particular, one that, that I heard this evening that I would've wanted to get involved in. But it's not my role, and it's not my time, and all it does is convince me that my time for retirement is, is, is right. It's been over 35 years that I've been coming into this building, since 1976. Today, for example, was, is a 14-hour day. And that is what all of your senior management team serves and provides in terms of the community's interests and the community's issues. So it, as Bill has pointed out, it's certainly been my privilege and my honor to have served in different roles, councillor, mayor, and CAO. My time was almost evenly divided between the very two distinct roles. Take this for what it's worth, of governance and of management, in terms of the responsibilities of the municipalities' affairs. I've had the, the privilege to be the city's longest-serving mayor, the city's longest-serving CAO, and Counselor Shoemaker, one of the youngest, if not the youngest, to have been elected to serve this community. And I thank all of the people of Sault Ste. Marie for having put faith and trust in me over the years to serve in the various capacities that I've had the privilege of serving. Any success that I've had, I enjoy because of the work of very many people. I don't think any one of us should singularly think that we by ourselves made the difference. We had a hand in that effort that made the difference, and I, I wanna thank all of those people that gave me a chance to work with them to make our community better. The city has excellent qualified staff in all departments, at all levels. I'm proud of them, I'm appreciative of all their work. We've senior managers who are excellent in managing this corporation, and on behalf of council, whose duty it is to govern this corporation. Please, I ask you, build a healthy respect for each other, and respect for each other's roles, to guide our organization long after I retire, because it no doubt is an important ingredient in continued success. I particularly wanna thank my assistant, Bianca, for her years of service and her loyalty and her support, and as I mentioned at an earlier event, all her baking. I'll now spend my retirement years to try and get rid of that 40 pounds that I put on as a result of all of that good stuff that was brought into my office. In addition to the CAO, our office has only one staff person, and that was Bianca. And I think all of you know the various types of people, and the various types of problems, and the various types of issues that come into the CAO's office and need to be dealt with in a timely fashion. Suffice it to say that we're very busy, and the job only gets done because of exceptional staff, and I wanna make sure that people know that Bianca has been exceptional in, in my office. So on that note, I say goodbye to all of you, and thank you for a wonderful career here at City Hall. I wish you all well in your future, and, and say to you, God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a motion to go into closed session by Councillors Nero and Shoemaker. Resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Further be it resolved that should set closed session be adjourned, the committee may, council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councillors Turco and Shoemaker, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried.[1774.46][1774.46]